At this point, I guess I would like to call the November meeting of the Burlington Board of School Commissioners to order. At this time, would like to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the oath for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Roll call. Is the sign-
Yep, yep, sorry.
Here.
Liz Curry?
Here.
And then Del Duca?
Here.
Jill Evans?
Here.
Rebecca Graham?
Here.
Patrick Colback?
Red Chickens?
Here.
Erin Crackerfield?
Hi, Erin, I'm here.
Alan Ness?
Here.
Bernie O'Rourke?
Here.
Keith Filter? Mary Sol?
Here.
Ben Truman?
Here.
Meredith Woodruff Keaton?
Here.
Sandra Wall?
Here.
Emily Freeman?
Next, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Evans, seconded by Commissioner Del Duca. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Erin, did you have?
Well, I was, I had talked to Mary about this earlier. Did we move the discussion about redistricting up? And I haven't seen if it's been updated, but is it possible to move that discussion earlier on the agenda since we will probably be discussing it, or we will have people talking about it during public comment and then maybe, so they don't have to stick around?
If I take a look, the points between our, the board report, superintendent's report, and the consent agenda.
I'd like at least part of the superintendent report to come first.
Is it part of it?
I think, I mean, the superintendent has mentioned she would like at least some of her report to be prior to that vote, or prior to that debate. We did put it at the fir-, as first of the committee meetings for that reason.
Okay. That's fine.
Consent agenda could go after.
You know, we can move consent agenda down.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, that doesn't take long though.
Okay, so, we'll just leave right now with no amendment?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay? Any other comment or amendment? If not, all in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. First item on the agenda is that next week, beginning November 18th, is National Education Week. And every year at the November meeting, we as a school board, we, we have the honor of actually presenting to the Burlington Education Association certificate of appreciation for this. And, you know, tonight, as I make this presentation, I think, one thing I wanted to men, and I will be making the presentation in a moment here, but one thing I wanted to mention in particular was, I wanted to pull out some, some particular work that has been coming from our education association in the recent past, and I think there's been a lot of work by the teachers, in particular at the high school, although this goes throughout the school district, in efforts related to Partnership for Change. And Partnership for Change, which is really trying to recreate and build a student-centered learning environment as primarily for our students at the high school, but it will have to be skills that are developed through our elementary and middle schools. And this partnership has had five major efforts of youth engagement, personal and proficiency-based learning, family-school partnerships, teaching and learning environments, and community-based learning. And, you know, to really mention everybody at the high school who's making effects on this would take me all night, but I just would like to hit a few items. And teachers like Herb Perez and Giselle Durpich have been flipping their classrooms in this idea of teaching and learning environments changing. And the physics teachers, Richard Meyer, Lisa Carpenter, and Molly Heath, in, on a genetics project, have been working with outside partners on consumer, community-based learning ideas where they're working with Efficiency Vermont, with community projects on the barcoding to get ideas related to the genetics within the city. There's also teachers such as Tammy Ladoo, Joycelyn Fletcher, Kim Sanders, Erica Lowe, who are working with AmeriCorps out in the community telling the story, and Dave Lambert working with the Young Writer Project to train teacher, train students to recover reporting in the community. On the personal proficiency-based learning areas, we have Professor Timoney Norris, Dan Yekolowicz, Gretchen Mueller in the Biology Department working on differentiated labs. Many of our teachers in the ninth grade academy, many of who have been mentioned, but also not, including Nadia Beach-Konger and Tammy Ladoo, Dove Stucker, Brennan Carney, who have been working on professional learning for developing proficiency-based learning systems within their curriculum. And such, you know, Heim Lowdich, who is a math teacher, working on a financial literacy course, again, based on proficiency-based learning. These are just a few of the many efforts that have been coming out of Partnership for Change that our education association members have been actively working beyond some of their, you know, their daily classroom work to really try to transform the education here that we are providing at the high school. And I know I've missed many teachers who've been doing great things and, you know, the work that's being done in the middle schools and down through the elementary schools as well is very important. So with that sort of acknowledgement, I would like to actually to have Bob Abbey, who is the president of the Burlington Education Association, come forward.
To accept on behalf of the Education Association. And Bob, this is a certificate of appreciation presented to the Burlington Education Association for your dedication to teaching and making the Burlington School District great for every student. So Bob, it's a great honor for me to hand you this. Last time, I think we probably were this close. We were, you know, doing some negotiations, which, you know, is also part of the relationship that we have, but I think that the board really does feel that the Education Association is one of the key partners with the community and with the administration in really providing the greatest education that we can for all of our kids within Burlington. And for that, we thank you very much and offer this appreciation in, in public to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Though I only, thank you very much, though I only represent parent educators and teachers throughout the district, I did want to acknowledge, and Alan started to hit on this, all the people that, that it takes to, to do the job that we're doing, and that includes all of you sitting right here on the school board. It starts with the parent educator who is greeting kids at 7:45 in the morning before school starts, the counselors and the nurses that maybe heal their bodies and heal their hearts, the people in the front office, all of our different schools who are greeting kids and making them feel special and acknowledging them individually, all the way through our teachers, our special educators, all the United Applied Arts teachers who bring something special for, for our students, and through our principal, and then all the way, I do want to acknowledge, as Alan said, I think, an important part of the BEA's job is to communicate closely with, with admin, so the people sitting here and all the way up through GD. And for the school board members here, I do really want to first thank you for our, the hard work that we all did, I think, coming to the three-year agreement, and very much appreciate it. And I do want to recognize the difficult job that you all have over the next couple months as we once again talk about the budget and what priorities and what the, that we have and what the vision of the district is. So I, you know, applaud your hard work and on behalf of, you know, everybody who really, you know, we are the glue that holds everybody together. And I thank you very much for all your hard work, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob. See you.
And behind, just to make you sure, understand that I'm not just skipping out, it is Report Card Week and by Friday, I have some work to do. So, thank you very much, but I am going to take off. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob? Next on the agenda is, the board is trying to make sure that when we have either work done by students or work that's appropriate to any of our key goals, one of which is, is the goal, goals related to diversity and equity, we try to bring them forward at the front of the board meeting. And tonight, one of our school board reps, Henry Prime, has done a short film entitled Racism: Working Together, We Can Do Better, which has been screened around, and several board members and community members asked if we could show it at the beginning of the meeting so the entire board and the community would be able to see it. So at this point, Henry, I don't need you to, you know, I don't know if you want to say anything, but otherwise we could just-
Real quick.
Go ahead, please.
So, um, I don't know if I need this or not. But essentially, this was, so this is a video that I created with the purpose-
I was just going to give you this one.
So, this is a video that I created for the purpose of being a conversation starter for an event that was hosted by the mayor's office, the Partnership for Change, and a few other organizations that echo several weeks ago. And the, the event was around looking at issues of racism in Burlington community and also the schools. So, and just a few things, the video is not meant to be all-inclusive, as many important parts of the discussion were left out, but it is intended as a conversation starter and to provide snapshots of several student voices and helpful, hopefully kick off some discussion at the event. So, yeah.
In my mind, I find that just the discussion on our race itself is a difficult one. Many don't want to have that conversation, they really don't believe that we have a race problem, as they say.
In a larger part of the community, I see a lot of racial profiling, where people walk in, like in a mall, if you walk in a mall, you'll be, you'll be looked at, people are just following you behind.
I mean, I still hear that word plenty of times. That's definitely my number-one issue.
I work at Hanaford, and I get, like, discriminated against all the time because of what I'm wearing or my color.
I think students should not just stand by and watch other people getting bullied because of their race or whatever.
We need to look at how our schools, for example, are teaching a curriculum that have teachers that really represent the diversity of the student body. We need to make sure that our businesses are welcoming of folks of all races, of all backgrounds, when we have people from around the country and around the world coming to shop in our downtown, for example, or even our restaurants.
Well, some of the things that are being done are around these issues. For example, in our school, we're making sure we have regular conversations about race. We believe that that's the first step to at least acknowledging that we have issues, because obviously you can't address an issue if you're going to, if you keep insisting that it doesn't exist.
Talk about it more, bring it up more, don't hide it, bring it to the table, open it up, then other people will feel safe about talking about who they really are and race is not a big factor in who, how a person is or who a person is.
I don't necessarily know what to do when I meet a new Muslim, maybe a Muslim student, because I'm not a Muslim and I don't have a lot of experience. So, I need to get that knowledge so I know how to interact with that new student.
I think a lot of the issues around Burlington High School about race and about ethnicity and belief systems is that we don't know enough about each other's race and culture.
We don't really feel comfortable sitting with people that are not same causes, that are not from us, same culture. We just don't feel like they'll understand us, where we're coming from.
Think about how you're acting, like, it's really closed off if you never say hello to anybody. Just say, say hello to people, that's the first step. Just, "Hi, I'm Willie, nice to meet you. Where are you from? Who are you?" Just get it down, right?
Just taking risks as you're coming from your heart, and you, you must be willing to do it. You can't just do it because you have to and because you're told to, because then you're not learning anything. But you, people just have to change their way to think and where they go by things. If your stomach ain't turning, you're learning, that's true. You gotta, you gotta fight through, we gotta fight through it, and we gotta take risks and sit with someone new and, and it's hard, I understand, but I don't know, we, as a school, we can just encourage people to do that, but people have to have the heart and soul to want to sit with someone new.
There are so many different races we have in the school, and most people don't take advantage of that, and that's bad.
We're all different, some way or another, and we should just learn to accept one another.
In order to be successful in any efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion, it requires leadership. It requires a leader to be committed to it, committed to it even when it's not popular.
I think the mayor or the city can bring it up more in his talks, because a lot of people do respect his talks and do listen to it, and I think as he brings it up more, maybe it will become more helpful.
The city of Burlington is going to be about inclusion. That means they have to, from the very top to the very bottom, they need to make sure that they are in fact being leaders on this issue.
Change is hard, and we need to find as many opportunities as we possibly can for us cultural learning and engagement. I've been a big believer that relationships make such a difference, you sort of have a sense of that other group, maybe positive, maybe not negative, but a relationship with someone can really change your perspective a lot. I think the advice I would give the next generation is to be fearless and to be courageous.
If I was going to say anything, it would be, speak up, make sure your voice is heard, and act.
I just hope to see that, you know, people really just work together or just are comfortable with, you know, like, if I'm comfortable with someone else that's from, you know, America or India, you know, just want to see everyone collaborate and be together.
It takes time, it will take time for us to get to where we want to be, and it's not just going to be immediately of time. We should just give it time.
I understand race, like, stopping race, racism, it's a long, long process. Every people try to stop it, most people try to stop it, and it's still happening. It's a long process. It might, it might not happen in a lifetime, but as long as we're moving forward, it's worth it. I'm looking for it.
Thank you, Henry, for screening it again, and hopefully with the board, I think, as we go forward, can help us lead to conversations as well and give us some ideas for, for thinking about when, especially there's some of the challenges to leadership that were presented to us by the students and by the other people in your, in your film. Thank you. At this point, it is the point of the board meeting where we engage, where we engage the community and ask for public comment. At this point in the full board meeting, it is a time for you to speak on any issue that may be on the, on the agenda tonight or may not be. It is not a time at which the board will engage you in conversation, except perhaps to make some clarifying comments, but we welcome anyone who would like to speak to come forward at this time. Typically, at this point, we do try to limit comments to about three minutes and, so that we can get all voices in, as well as the board can get its work done for this evening as well. So at this time, I think the public, let me just- As I said, if, you know, if you wanted to speak, to sign up, but if you haven't signed up, there will certainly be time at the end. So, first person who has signed up this evening is Helen Hosley. And when you come up, if you just please could introduce yourself and give, you know, brief structure to what you're saying.
All right, thank you. Good evening, I'm Helen Hosley, I live in Ward Seven. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the CP Smith playground equipment, as well as lighting around the school. So first, I'm going to establish a little bit of who I am, for those of you who don't know who I am. In 2002, I spearheaded a community playground build at CP Smith, the tune of about $100,000. Subsequently, I was a PTO president at CP Smith through the entire tenure of my children attending there, so that was about six years, and over that time, we raised over $250,000 for the CP Smith school community. In addition, I worked on the 2009 bond to help get that passed, so we could upgrade our three schools for energy efficiency. And in addition, I have worked many years with the Burlington Friends of Education to get school board, to get the school budget passed. So needless to say, I'm a supporter of schools, okay? Now, I also live directly across the street from CP Smith School, so I have, I consider it like my front yard of my house, and so I take great pride in the beautiful things that are happening there. And subsequently, I also look at what doesn't happen there, what does happen there, and question why. So, that CP Smith playground, beautiful playground, it is, you know, now working on 11 years old. We completed the build in May of 2002, gifted it to the school in June of 2002. Now, it was designed intentionally to have as little maintenance as possible, and I think it's fulfilled that requirement that we had when we designed it. However, there are a few maintenance things that need to happen, like replace equipment when necessary. For the last two years, the tire swings have been taken down and have never been replaced. Now, that's, the tire swings, if you look at any playground, that's a very highly-used piece of equipment, kids love it, and that's why we had two of them put in. Currently, there's an infant swing on one of them, so I'm, I've heard tell that there's a, maybe a daycare at Smith now, which, you know, that's a $5,000 piece of equipment with one infant swing on it. The other one is empty. And subsequently, the climbing rope at the fitness circuit on the three-through-five side has been taken down because it was really frayed and it really needs to be replaced. So, in the past, the school district has had a habit of taking equipment down and never replacing it. And I think it's unacceptable when you have about $10,000 worth of equipment that's going unused, because there's nowhere in the budget to find $1,400 to replace swings and maybe another $200 to replace a climbing rope. So for under $2,000, you can actually have kids enjoying the swings again. So I'm asking you tonight, and I've worked with Tom, Tom Fleury at CP Smith School, and he insists there isn't any money in the budget. I've asked the PTO, and they're a little upset about how the whole thing transpired, so they're not willing to pony up the money again to replace something that we intentionally gifted to the school 11 years ago. And I think a small investment of under $2,000 after 11 years on the school behalf is really a very small price to pay. So I'm asking you tonight to actually find the money to replace those swings and the climbing rope, so the kids can enjoy the physical fitness that it was once intended for. Okay, so, second portion of comments, yes?
Yeah, and three minutes are kind of up, so kind of keep it short.
Thank you. Lighting. As I live directly across the street from the school, I am also representing Gary Russ, who lives on James Avenue. Okay, for 17 years, I've had a light shining in my bedroom, because A, is it necessary now because of the fact that we have beautiful perimeter lighting? Or, you know, is there a way that you put a shade on this light so they're not, one shines in Gary's bedroom, one shines in my bedroom, and I don't want to hear, "Buy a better curtain," because when it's 95 degrees in the summertime, it's really not fun to close a curtain window. So, I think, look at the perimeter lighting around there that's now, you actually are leasing those lights from BED. Is it necessary? You have great lighting around the schools, you don't need to have floodlights in the playground anymore. So, I think for a small $200 investment perhaps, or at least looking into the issue, would really go a long way to keeping voters in Ward Seven really happy. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Nina Chill, and after that is Martha Lang.
Hello. I am a parent at Champlain School, and I'm here with some others, and I don't do well off the cuff, so I'm going to read a statement about the windows and skylights at Champlain Elementary School and our wish to, for the school board to make them a priority for the district. I should say, the lack of windows. As members of the community of parents, teachers, and staff at Champlain Elementary School, we are concerned about the lack of natural light in the building, and call upon the school administration and the Burlington School District to give this issue high priority in the, in your infrastructure planning. As a result of the school's lack of windows, many students spend years in core classrooms completely devoid of natural light. On a yearly basis, this issue affects approximately 325 students and 45 staff members. Champlain Elementary School is the only school in the district with such a lack of natural light, and we feel these conditions limit our students and staff members in reaching their full potentials. Given the fact that lots of kids have apparently survived Champlain just fine without windows, this may occur to some to be a relatively minor issue, especially considering the many other serious building issues the district faces. However, research shows an increase of more than 20% in student test scores when natural light exists in learning spaces, while lack of natural light has been associated with increased fatigue, behavioral issues, and seasonal affective disorder. Not to mention the fact that it's a drag. That's not on here, I just had to throw it in. Retrofitting the school with an emphasis on adding windows and skylights, not simply adding more artificial lighting, would address numerous district goals, including improving student success rates, reducing electricity use, and lowering heating bills through more efficient window technologies. Based on surveys we have conducted on staff, of staff, we also believe it would help with staff retention. We strongly urge the school board to commit to the goal of guaranteeing natural light in every classroom at Champlain and to make this funding priority. We understand that bringing natural light into some of the Champlain classrooms will pose architectural and engineering challenges, but we also know that within the school community and the Burlington community at large, there is a wealth of resources that we can draw upon for help. Unfortunately, past grassroots efforts to improve the lighting situation have been stifled by bureaucratic stagnation. In the fall of 2010, a parent obtained donations of solar tube skylights earmarked for two second-floor classrooms. Both classrooms were to have the tubes installed by summer, by summer 2011. To date, only one classroom has had the lights installed. Installation in the second classroom was rescheduled to take place in summer 2013, was then delayed, and is now rescheduled again for summer 2014. Our kids and staff have waited far too long for this simple improvement, wasting the donation. In addition to addressing the larger windows project, we call on the school and district to present an immediate plan with a firm deadline before summer 2013 for installation of the remaining solar tubes. And as members of the Champlain community, we are ready to support the school and board in achieving these goals, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Nina.
Are people interested in copies or-
If you have something to hand out, please do, yes.
Okay, can I just kind of send it around?
Yes, that's good.
Actually.
Martha Lang?
Thank you. All of you probably know who I am. My name is Martha Lang, and I live on Colchester Avenue. Thank you for giving me the op-
Would you be able to use the, yeah, that microphone, just for the, thanks.
Hi, my name is Martha Lang, and I live on Colchester Avenue, and probably some of you know who I am. Tonight, I know that you're going to talk about classroom capacity. I was just wondering if perhaps you would also include under the topics, not just optimal capacity, which is apparently about 96%, but if you would also include maximum capacity for the schools. In this way, it wouldn't be as misleading- I was just wondering if perhaps you would also include under the topics, not just optimal capacity, which is apparently about 96%, but if you would also include maximum capacity for the schools. In this way, it wouldn't be as misleading as it appears to be. Because optimal capacity, according to your presentation for tonight, is about 96%. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, you all know my email address, maximum capacity for the schools is only 87%. So it's very important to me that other people know that optimal capacity is what... Gee, it's nice, wouldn't it be nice if we could do this for all of our schoolchildren? And I do support the schools, I went to Irelan School, quite happy. And maximum capacity, which is the most that we could have in our schools. And I thank you very, very much, I know most of you are very, very hardworking, you're trying as hard as you can to make the Burlington schools better, and I'm trying as hard as I can to help you. Thank you very, very much, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this point? Well, I said, like I said, if you do come up, please just introduce yourself. Going once, going twice. Okay, thank you very much for public, and at this point, we will continue into the next portion of the agenda, which I think, if I get back to my agenda... Is Board Report, right. Several things in the Board Report, I just do want to pull up my... I've got some notes here on my screen that I want to make sure that I, my reminders. The first thing that I would like to do, while it says, there's a thank you for some public input, I did want to make another thank you first, and I need to find my list here. Last Saturday, I think it was the second, we held with Partnership for Change a public meeting at which we were discussing and getting public input on student-centered learning and opportunities for that. And one thing I would like to acknowledge is that there were 20 students who led and facilitated conversations on that weekend, led and facilitated conversations with the community, with adults. And those students came from both of our school districts, Winuski and Burlington. And I just would like to acknowledge the students from Burlington who led discussions. Krishna Magar, Forrest Elliott, Ina Ibrisa-Movich, Medina Arbo, Mabel Prine, Shavar Dawkins, Finn Totten, Henry Prine, Oscar Smith, Troy Porter, and Will Sutton. These, along with the students from Winuski who led these discussions, took a very strong leadership role in our community and working toward this goal of student-centered learning. And I think it's important that we acknowledge this because the youth engagement and leadership is a major portion of Partnership for Change and student-centered learning. Second thing I'd like to do is, I would like to thank, I would just like to read something into the record, which is a thank you to the community for participating in the Burlington School District Budget Survey. In September, the Board reached out to residents with a desire to get input from voters on program priorities prior to making our budget decisions this year. The survey was developed asking what program priorities are in order that the information to develop proposals for further public comment and input could be done. The Board and the district would like to extend our appreciation to all who participated in the survey and who continue to be engaged in the process. The information gathered is being strongly considered and will be used to inform upcoming budget proposals. There was more that we wrote, but I think that gets to the heart of what we're doing, because one of the items that we mentioned in that letter was that tonight, we would be looking at, without any judgment being passed, what were the proposals put forward to us by the community, also by the administration, as part of our public reach-up and in a first step toward building our public budget. So that thank you to the community is something that the Board has also, I think, expressed as well, much perhaps through front porch forums and also through other electronic means. On either of these points, is there any question or comment from other Board members? If not, I have a couple more things I'd like to go through, and then also would open the floor to the rest of the Board. One item that we have here is an update on the real estate transactions. Information that was current as of this afternoon was, as related to the Taft lease, you know, we were comfortable, we are, the Board and the school district are comfortable with the lease, but I do know that the city is in fact reviewing it before it will be discussed again. And I know that the city, through word with their attorney's office, still has concerns about certain language within the lease for the Taft building. As far as the Diocese's response to our, basically our framing of something as an option, they have yet to respond, but they did say they would take a deposit, but they might not be willing to make it risk-free. So this point has not been settled yet, we do not have anything settled on that portion, which as a reminder, was 1% of the purchase price, or $20,000. So that, there is nothing in effect to report, other than our offer has not been directly accepted. So these are the two points that I have that I can update people on related to the real estate transactions at this point. I don't know if anyone has further question or comment, but it is also something that continues to be on the agenda for infrastructure and technology. One other thing I would like to say is Keith is not here tonight, Keith Pillsbury. Just would like everybody to know, he broke his foot this morning, so unfortunately, Keith is not. He may call in, we may try to get him online, which is allowable under our Board rules, to participate in discussion and vote later in the meeting. Anyone else have anything for a public, for Board Report? I seem to remember a couple comments from people, but I don't remember exactly who. I guess not. At this point then, Jeanne, I guess I would turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm going to switch order a little bit because I don't see who I need to see in the audience for the diversity and equity update, so I'll do that in a couple minutes. So I'd like to start with Partnership for Change updates. And I'd like to start by welcoming Hal Colston, the Executive Director for Partnership for Change, who is here to speak a little bit about the November 2nd learning conversation.
Hello, hello?
I think you were amplified.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Thanks. Thank you, Jeanne. Well, Alan stole a little bit of my thunder, but I'll pick up on that. Saturday, November 2nd, we had our second community learning conversation. We had about 160 people from both communities, parents, students, teachers, administrators, public officials, as well as government officials at the state level. And as you heard, we had 20 students involved who were acting in leadership roles. Twelve of them were Burlington students. And they helped set up the tone of our gathering, and I'm going to share a few examples of personal statements to give you a flavor for that. And they helped us co-facilitate small group discussions to have community members weigh in on how can they help them achieve their goals in terms of their personal statements. So just to give you an idea, my name is, and I'm a 10th grader at Burlington High School, help me design a school system that teaches me 21st century problem-solving skills instead of 20th century content in textbooks. My name is, and I'm a 10th grader at Burlington High School, help me design a school system that allows me to learn at my own pace and keeps me engaged during classes by using more hands-on activities. My name is, and I'm a 12th grader at Burlington High School, help me design a school system which I can make a difference in my community and learn about applicable skills I'll need for a future career at the same time. So we had about 20 of these statements read, and then we proceeded to break into small group conversations where the personal statement was the focus of the discussion. And we collected a lot of data that we're currently analyzing and compiling, and will share with you at your December meeting. But to give you an idea of what the students were looking for in terms of redesigning a school that works for them. And several of the Board members were present, Miriam, Kathy, Linda, and Henry. I'll put you on the spot. But if you could all just share what stood out for you in participating in this event? Miriam?
Well, actually, what stood out for me, I thought the whole thing was quite interesting and really eye-opening. I met a couple of kids, personally, that I wouldn't have met otherwise because we met in small groups with facilitators in a classroom with about 10 community members and the student facilitators. So it was kind of intimate, and you really got to talk to the students about what they needed. But the high point for me was before that, when I ended up at the table that was the Arabic table, so there was the Arabic translator there, and I was with a group of people who were here from Iran within the last three months. And it was wonderful sharing of information, and I learned a lot about the schools in Iran. And it was, it was great.
So the conversations in the classroom, I've heard that not only the one I was in, but many of the others were very deep and intense and amazing in that the students are in a room full of people they don't know, and they're telling them their heart's desire and what they need to be a better student. So it is an example for me of how good it is to have the student voice at the table.
So I was one of the facilitators, and what stood out for me is, it was really cool and unique to be in a room and talk about what I want to get out of education, having, you know, 10 other people help me figure out how that can happen. And it made me see the potential of like, you know, personalized learning plans. And like, if it's actually done really well, it can be an incredibly powerful thing. So gave me hope for that.
Linda?
It was an interesting experience for me because I had a woman, an exchange woman from Japan here, staying at my house, and so I brought her to the program. And she was fascinated, I was doing some translating for her, but she was fascinated by the fact that students were running this and their educational system is so different. So it was a very good experience.
Thank you. And we had invited Governor Shumlin, and he wanted to be with us, but he was unable to attend. And I will pass around a letter that he shared with us in support of our work. But that's my part, thanks.
Thank you, Hal, I appreciate that. Now I'm going to redirect myself back to diversity and equity, and I'll come back to Partnership for Change. I'd like to welcome and introduce Dr. Deverne Bell, who just entered the room with Nikki a few minutes ago. Deverne arrived approximately 24 hours ago from the Northwest Coast.
Well, I'm not really, not even 24...
Not even 24 hours ago? Nikki, I'm not sure if you'd like to bring Dr. Bell up to... Yeah, just if you would mind being our host there. Dr. Bell, I'm very excited to start working with her. We've only had email and phone communication, she and I, since she was hired. And I've just been very impressed with the work that she has done for 16 years in school districts in Seattle and Vancouver, work similar to what we're needing. And she also has just been recently elected president?
No, Regional Director.
Regional Director.
For the National Association of Multicultural Education. When they learned that I accepted this position, they put my name in the hat because Region 1 was a vacant position, and Vermont is part of Region 1.
Nikki?
Microphone?
Yeah, that one, the amplifying one. We have two sets of mics here, one is the amplification and the other is for the media.
Which doesn't amplify. Anyway, welcome, Dr. Bell.
Thank you.
And we will be having opportunities to get to know you further with the Board, to have some interaction. I understand that Alan and Rebecca have had some conversations about the next Board training around diversity, equity, bias, et cetera. And our department, the department that you're part of, will be deciding, discussing what that training is, but there'll be more opportunity. But we really wanted to welcome you and take advantage of the fact that you've just arrived and you're still probably asleep, and it's fine.
Yeah, I'm on major jet lag.
I bet.
On Sunday, I returned from Oakland, California, back to Portland, Oregon, from the NAME Conference, and then left Monday night, hit it here, so...
Oh, my gosh.
Major jet lag.
Has anybody given you maple syrup yet?
No, not yet.
It'll be on your door tomorrow.
Just as we did to Nikki when we hired her last year, Dr. Bell spends her first couple of days in a training with the Washington Consulting Group. Sam Offer and Washington Consulting arrives tonight for training 40 more faculty and staff members tomorrow, spending tomorrow and Thursday. And we'll be spending tomorrow night with administrators as well, continuing the discussion. So I think that you'll really enjoy the experience. I know that many of us already have, and I'm happy to have them back as well. So thank you very much.
Without putting you on the spot, did you want to offer us any hello's, welcome certainly? Great seeing you, but no need?
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I was just going to say, if you want to say, anything that you wanted to say to us before or not, or otherwise, we'll talk to, we'll be meeting with you soon?
Well, I want to say thank you, I'm looking forward to the work to be done here. I've been very impressed with what I've been reading about the work that you've already been doing and looking forward to assisting you in going to the next direction.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, hello.
Would you like to speak also, Nikki? No, okay. Nikki, thank you for...
I'll just say, we're looking forward to her helping us to finally get back to where we were in terms of the four legs that we needed. And so we are really looking forward to it, we will be supporting her, of course, and we look forward to your continued support for the Diversity Equity and Community Partnership Office.
Thank you. And Nikki, thank you for being the driver tonight, appreciate that. The third thing that I'd like to comment under diversity and equity is that this Sunday at 5 o'clock at St. Paul's Cathedral, thank you, is a follow-up Parents for Change Public Action Meeting. You may recall that last November, District Administration met with Parents for Change, New American Parents, and committed to a number of different commitments which focused primarily on the student high school placement process and student communications at Burlington High School. Quite a bit of work has been done over this past year, and Sunday is the opportunity to report out and follow up on those commitments and recommit to the work that needs to be done going forward. One of the exciting things that we had committed to at that time that we worked in partnership with parents on was a report card that really demonstrates to parents not just what grade a child gets, which is relatively meaningless outside of a context, but where the child is in progression to post-secondary plans. And we piloted that report card in June, and right now, as Bob Abbey said, we're in the midst of the first, end of the first quarter. And so in the mail, over the last couple of days, we have mailed about 600 of those progress reports home to families, our New American families. And, you know, we're still piloting it, we're still tweaking it. Each version's going to be better and better, but it's really exciting to see the work that's been done on that and how far we've come. Liz?
Sorry, I was asking a question, two questions. One is, where did you say the meeting was?
At St. Paul's Cathedral, 5 o'clock, Sunday, November 17.
And then the report card, is that something the district is planning to integrate or transition to for everybody?
We don't know yet.
Oh.
We're in the pilot phase, I can't answer the, I can't answer Phase 2 yet. I do, having said that, I'll still answer you anyway, as we're moving towards a proficiency-based graduation expectations, I think it does make sense that we're transitioning more towards something like that because that really is what moving from a Carnegie unit to a proficiency-based system is about. What is it that you have to know that gets you to the next place? And where are you on that continuum? So I think there will be some version over the next few years.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, I would just wonder about why we have two different types of report cards.
They're not two different types of report cards, it's an additional progress report to the traditional report card specifically that we committed to work with the Parents for Change on for that particular population. And again, it's a pilot at this point, so we're really deciding as we move towards proficiency-based education where that pilot evolves to. So there's also a traditional report card, this is supplemental.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to clarify again, it's high school, the report card, not middle school?
Yes.
Okay, because I have concerns, I can speak only from my experience and I don't, yeah.
In a sense, though, we're also doing quite a bit of that work at elementary. Curriculum Committee last month got a report on our new standards-based math report card for elementary, so a lot of that work is happening as well.
And I realize we have to work out all the kinks and the whole migration to technology and EDU at the middle school, but I can just speak from my experience as a parent that I am, at times, very confused by, you know, EDU Jupiter grades, where I find stuff. And every time I'm confused, I think, how are, how is a new American going to figure this out if I can't, you know? So I just, I don't know if that's part of the conversation also at the middle grade level.
It is, and we probably provide more support for our new American parents than we do for you.
Okay, so somebody needs to hold my hand, I guess.
Yeah, so that's good to know. Not just you, but that, yeah, that there are still some more supports.
Okay.
Mary?
This is a little bit tangential, but since we're on the topic of report cards. So for children on special education, IEPs or 504s, even EST plan, but particularly IEP or 504, often the regular report cards really don't do the trick. So I would encourage you to think widely and certainly there'll be some people in that, parents of new Americans that also have kids who are on some sort of special plan. So, yeah, I hope that someone is thinking about that because it really needs to be part of how we're making it.
Right, and as you know, students on IEPs do have additional reporting requirements as well, based upon the quarterly goals in the IEP. And again, I do, we do believe that as we're moving towards the graduation expectations, that reporting will look very different for all students. Thank you, I'll capture that. Back to Partnership for Change, before I lose Hal. Couple of other things just to be aware of. Several of us just returned from a very inspiring and engaging three-day conference in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, that Nellie May Education Foundation put on. Alan was present, Kathy was present, Hal was present. There were approximately twenty-five of us who went, twenty-five to thirty, who went between Burlington and Winuski. And it was just, those of you who receive my weekly update know already, but it was, it was, it really was re-energizing. It was an incredible opportunity to stop and reflect at the work that we have been doing under our Student-Centered Learning Initiative over the last year. We discussed a lot about how the Partnership for Change really is not supposed to be a separate entity. This is our work and the partnership supports our work and our vision and where we're going. And we talked a lot about how to, to make sure that we're making that much more clear. The community involvement in the work that we're doing to transform the high school, to remodel the high school education, the student involvement in this work of remodeling has been, has been historical. I think that I am, I personally am very proud of where we've come in just one year and I'm very excited about where we're headed as we, as we go forward. You heard some from Hal today as he was speaking about the student facilitators. You heard from Henry and Miriam and Kathy and Linda about the November second learning conversation. This is very much alive and moving forward and you'll be hearing more as we go along. There were some newly approved proposals that our Partnership for Change has given mini-grants to. Ninth grade Burlington High School humanities teachers received a mini-grant for embedded coaching for differentiated instruction in order to move their heterogeneous classes along further. There's an On Top Survivor Challenge that received a mini-grant with students going to the Northern Lights Ropes Course on November eighth, and you can see photos about that on the Partnership for Change website. Shades of Ebony, Universal Design Process, implementing a new process with Shade Students, will be beginning next month, is a new proposal that was approved. We also have been participating with United Way, Winuski School District, and Community College of Vermont around alternative pathways for English-language learner students. And with the problem kind of defined as many of our English-language learner students arrive without credits and their time at the high school kind of comes to an end naturally, not by law, but naturally, there's an age differential there. They may graduate with diplomas but still not yet have the skills to be successful at the secondary level, a post-secondary level. What can we do as a community, and again, CCV is at the table along with some others, what can we do to give perhaps a post-grad year, a really focused year to make sure that our new American students who arrive late in their educational career really have the skills that they need to be successful in post-secondary education? That's an ongoing conversation that continues. The Partnership for Change, the Nellie May Education Foundation actually sponsored a communications survey around our work around student-centered learning and our, what our community members feel about communications within the district. Copies of this report are going to be emailed directly to you as school board members and our family school partnership teams will be looking at the data to create recommendations for some next steps for the district, so you can watch for that to be coming to you. Also, the results will be posted on both the district and the partnership websites for the entire community to see. And on January twenty-fifth, if you could please note to hold the date, we, the Nellie May Education Foundation, is sponsoring a joint school board retreat on Saturday, January twenty-fifth, with Winuski and Burlington School Boards to do some board development and work around our vision for our students in Burlington and Winuski. So this is your first advance notice to please hold the date of January twenty-fifth for some school board retreat work with Winuski. I know I'm talking a long time, so I'll be very brief. You can read the enrollment, updated enrollment information and capacity information right on Board Docs. Our enrollment continues to be very healthy. We've held very steady since the start of the school year and we continue to have students coming in. Paul Irish did a very comprehensive capacity study that is also posted there. It's also posted on the ITC website, but I moved it over to this particular agenda so you could grasp it easily. And he included some of the background documentation on why we went with optimal, optimal capacity because it's based on school board policy, code, square footage for code, and contract limitations. And then finally, we have begun the process for the Hunt Middle School Principal Search. Nikki Fuller will be leading the search. She has already met with teachers. She's starting to put together an advisory committee of teachers, administrators, and parents. We are advertising externally, beginning next week. We will keep the ad open until January fifteenth with the hope of finalizing the position by February vacation. We are advertising nationally and reaching out to multiple networks that we have developed over the last couple of years. And applications will be accepted on school spring, so I'll keep you posted as we move forward through that process. That's the end of my report tonight. Any questions?
I have a question. I don't know that there's necessarily an immediate answer for it, but I'm looking at the projections versus capacity. And I'm looking at the capacity maximum of six-eight at nine hundred students. And I'm looking at the current four-five, or three-four-five, or the current three-two, third, second, and first grade, and we are at eight ninety-nine and nine oh five for a capacity of nine hundred.
This is correct.
And this is something we're thinking about?
Yes, that's why the capacity study was done.
Yeah.
Infrastructure technology is, this is on their agenda and yes, we are-
Because this is, I mean, we're looking two years down the road and we're at capacity, which is not a long time to, in the life of a school.
Any, any other questions? I have a follow-up to Patrick's, which is, when we state maximum as per policy in the work that Paul did, does that relate at all to, I mean, how does that relate to the physical space? Does that mean when we have, in six to eight, for example, the maximum as per policy is nine hundred, is that the physical capacity that we have right now or is that based on the number of classes that we currently have with teachers? What does that mean? Because I-
I'm gonna ask Paul to answer since he worked on the study.
They, she just showed the capacity and that capacity is based on the number of current core classrooms in six through eight. So there are currently six, six-three teachers and twelve.
Gotcha, okay. That's exactly my question. Thanks. No other questions for Jeannie? Okay, moving on then. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner O'Rourke moves, seconded by Commissioner Woodward King. First question, I guess, is are there any items, will you have a copy of the most recent consent agenda in your?
On, right in front of you.
And I just, also minutes, other than that, was there anything else that anybody want to pull from the consent agenda? Kathy?
I don't need to pull it just to get my name out into a meeting that I attended.
And for which meeting?
Diversity and Equity, ten twenty-two.
Okay, we can make that add?
Thank you.
Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing no, none, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda passes. At this point, we would turn it over to Miriam to report from the Ad-Hoc Redistricting Committee.
So we had a public forum here at six o'clock and I spoke quite a bit then about the context of the Ad-Hoc Redistricting Committee and what our charge was. So I want to get to the, I think most people are fairly comfortable with that, so I'll go over it quickly, but feel free to ask me questions if you need more information. So as all of us know, we set up the Ad-Hoc Redistricting Committee a couple of weeks ago, I guess at our last meeting, in order to provide a, can people hear me okay?
For passing a mic.
Oh, no, I have two mics. So we set up the committee and the charge of the committee was to come up with a particular recommendation to bring to the board regarding what the configuration of the school board would be under the new proposed ward system in Burlington. So in very short summary of it, the new ward system which is proposed would have eight wards instead of seven and those eight wards would be divided into four larger districts. So you would have eight wards and four districts. That's different from, quite different from the current situation where we have seven wards. So the question is, how should the school board reconfigure to work with those ward lines? The Ad-Hoc Committee met several times. We had a public forum. We came up with a recommendation, which I have tonight in the form of a motion. And then we also had a second public forum tonight, as I said, and we got a little bit more input. So unless there are questions, go ahead and go forward and make the motion. Does anyone, yes, Jill?
Was there any content in tonight's public?
I'm gonna put you on the speaker.
Challenge the representation of public?
There was, in fact, and I think probably we can hear that in, in the discussion tonight, but there were people that were supportive and please, for those of you that wrapped the public forum tonight, feel free to chime in, but there were a number of people who spoke in support of our current recommendation, which is for sixteen numbers, two for each of the eight wards. And there were several people that spoke against it. I would summarize briefly that those people that spoke for it were very concerned about the representation and diversity on the board and spoke a lot about having stronger and better outcomes when you have more people contributing to them. The people who spoke against it tended to speak about the efficiency of the board, the ability to get things done, and the specific role of the school board as being fairly limited and therefore perhaps lending itself to a smaller board. So I don't want to say too much because I think it will come out in the context of our discussion, but I, I don't think there was too much new in this public forum that we hadn't at least had hints of in the last one.
So have you ma, made the motion at this point?
I will make the motion. Okay, so the motion is that the board recommend to Burlington City Council Charter Change Committee that language in the city charter be amended so that there are two school board commissioners elected from each ward, making a total of sixteen school board commissioners under the proposed redistricting plan.
Is there a mic on?
No.
Yeah, Erin.
Can you hear that key or not?
Can you hear me better now? Okay, shall I repeat the motion? Is that better?
I don't think so, Miriam.
That, that looks like it's off.
This looks like it's on. All right, I will repeat, shall I repeat the motion? So everyone can hear it?
Yeah.
Okay. That the board recommend to the Burlington City Council's Charter Change Committee that language in the city charter be amended so that there are two school board commissioners elected from each ward, making a total of sixteen school board commissioners under the proposed redistricting plan.
Is there a second? Greg, Commissioner Jenkins seconds, and do you want to speak to the motion at first?
No, I would like to ask one of the people to speak to the motion.
Greg?
I have two main concerns about our redistricting. And I find it very ironic that we've invested so much time and money into promoting diversity, yet we want to shrink the board, which is going to have the reverse effect. A smaller board, quite frankly, is going to be an even wider board, if possible, here. My, my, my other main concern is that the proposal for the districts or precincts or whatever they want to be called, they're actually, in my opinion, they're super wards. Now to campaign, and I've done it twice in Ward Seven, it takes about six weeks. For me, it took six weeks, three-day weekends, about six hours of walking and knocking at gates to cover the whole ward. That's a lot of time. The four super wards, although it won't be double the time, it's going to be a significant amount of time to go and knock on doors. So people aren't going to be able to do it, so it brings money, even more money, into the game of running campaigns. And again, it takes away from the door-to-door knocking, which I find very valuable. That's what grassroots politics is all about, is knocking on the doors and talking to your neighbors. And anything that takes away from that, that what, which we have in our city and works great, I cannot support. I'll leave it at that for now.
Anyone else?
Just clarify. You're in support of the motion.
I'm in support of the motion. I-
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, because you said you can't, you can't support, but you can't support of, I know what the original, I know what the original movement was. You're saying, I just-
What I'm trying to do, Patrick, thank you for having me, calling me on rambling. I'm trying to be preemptive on, I don't want eight members and I don't want the super wards. So I'm just trying to be preemptive about that in case that's the route we go down. I want to be clear that I cannot support that.
Erin?
Well, after hearing both sides and after living in a city council house and in a school board house, unfortunately, the school board is very different than the city council. So for me, I, to run for a school board, I didn't run. I didn't knock on doors, I didn't have signs, I didn't have brochures. In fact, no one stepped up to the plate in Ward Two. I sort of did it as a favor to our community because no one else was going to do it. And as a new teacher and as someone who cares about our ward, I did it. But the reality is, is you're not, maybe in the New North End, it's totally different. So I think it's hard to have a blanket approach to saying how you would run a campaign. I thought we weren't a political body. I thought we don't, we don't run with Democrat, Republican, progressive at the school board. You run because you care about the schools and because most of the time, no one else is going to do it, which is sad. And that, that's sort of my take on it. So I will not be supporting this motion. I, I believe that to be an effective board and to get things done, which- And that, that's sort of my take on it. So I will not be supporting this motion. I, I believe that to be an effective board and to get things done, which, to get things done, our job is to manage the super, to fire and hire the superintendent. It's not to do a lot of the things that I think the community thinks that we are supposed to be doing. In fact, up until just this past year, I finally figured out what my role as a school board member was. So, you know, turnover is high, I get that, and that's really hard. People are, that we've had are now, we had a discussion about, you know, when we were evaluating the superintendent, a lot of stuff was being said that has been said before. So yeah, I, I maybe would support a longer term to, to sort of help with that, but I think a bigger board, we don't get stuff done now, as a fourteen-member board. And I've said before, in Curriculum Committee, we have gone in circles about doing things, and we never do them. And I don't think that has anything to do with size. I think it has to do with our mission and our goal, and, and what that is, and I don't think a lot of us even know what that is. So if you go up to sixteen, I think there's going to be a lot of voices. I disagree that a smaller board means less diversity. I think whatever, whatever background you come from, if you want to run and you want to step up, by all means, do it. And if you can get your community to back you, they're going to do it. I mean, Burlington is much different than New York City. If you know your neighbors, and you're, and you, and you're out there and you're going to MK meetings, you're going to create a following that's going to want to support you in whatever you want to do. So I don't think a smaller board means less diversity at all. In fact, I think if anything, it might encourage people to step up, and it might get us, you know, maybe there will be some competition. Because I'd like to see that. I would have liked to have someone run against me, so that I could have stood my ground as to why I want to do this, because honestly, you know, people were just checking my name off, because it was the only one on the ballot, and I think that's really sad. So, again, must, I know the New North End is very different, I know the South End is very different, I know the Old North End is very different, so I think it's hard to say, you know, it's like kind of comparing apples and oranges in some sense. So, I, I'd like to hear why people think a smaller board would mean less diversity. And, yeah, anyone, if, if it is a competitive race, anyone who's willing to hit the doors, by all means, go for it, and I don't think it takes money to do that. So, that's my two cents.
Anyone else for comment?
I have a question.
Uh, Jill?
Are the eight wards divided in two, into the super district?
Yes.
Yeah, for clarification, I'm basically, basically five, six become one, four and seven are one, two, the new eight and one, so, you know, those kind of combinations like that. Meredith?
I'm going to speak to the motion right now and not really jump ahead to the other numbers, because that's all I can keep in my head right now, and I'm a rambler, so I totally identify with that. It's one of the things that probably has driven the other board members' minds, but... Okay, so, I've been on the board about five years. I come from the most diverse ward. The first time that I ran, the two people, there were only two people running, it was a special election, we were both white. Because if you're tied, in this case, I want to speak to diversity, and I recognize that diversity is more than just color, but if you're talking about sort of where our district is headed right now, and how I would like to see our board reflect who the kids are in the district, you know, I certainly, it's, you know... Look up here right now, I think it's pretty clear that we would benefit from having, you know, more people of color on the board. Anyway, so, the first time I ran, you know, there weren't, I'm in the most diverse ward, and the two people running were both white. The second time I ran, no one ran against me. I tried to recruit some people to run, but a limiting factor is the fact that, you know, we aren't getting any sort of pay, it's all volunteer. And I'm finding out right now that it costs a lot of money in terms of babysitting to be on the school board, because I'm, you know, because of changes in my life, you know. So, it's pretty clear, I have a lot of friends who are single parents, and I've tried to get them to run, and no way can they handle this, you know, it just costs too much money for them to run. And it, you know, with all the meetings, you know, I think part of moving toward a professional board would, would be to have some sort of money that goes to board members similar to city councils, just to pay for childcare, you know. So that if you wanted to diversify the board, that would be another way to do it. So another part of my experience is, in my five years, is I thought one of the things that, that I saw from the outset would have made the board much more effective was to have fewer members. I actually think it would help the diversity and equity effort, because what I've seen is that as the board turns over, you see a shift, you see new agendas coming in. People have their own ideas about what the school district should be doing, and they lose sight of the bigger agendas that we've all sort of put in place, and then we have to re-educate everyone all over again, and by that time, the board's turned over again. So, I'm also not always seeing that people have the ti- you know, we're all volunteers, I'm not always seeing that people have the time and the energy to put into the board often, and sometimes I'm at fault of that. What I see is maybe, usually around, you know, a fifth to a third of the board is very actively in getting stuff done on the board, you know. I thi- I see a lot of our meetings, and I think people kind of go in and out depending on their circumstances in their lives, you know. And I've seen that myself. I, I think a lot of our meetings are a lot of reporting and not acting, and I, I think when people use the argument that this is going to upset the committee's system, I say, fine, bring it on, you know. A smaller board, there are ways to work with our committee system, revamping it in a way that would really help us focus on what is going on in the district, what we need to move on through, what sort of changes need to be made. I feel like, you know, in my years at the Curriculum Committee, just the way that committee operates, not at the fault of the chairs, but it was a lot of just listening to reports, report after report after report. And you're not going to get people to run if that's where they see their time being spent. I also frankly think it's easier for superintendents, I think it's har- both harder, it's hard for superintendent to keep sixteen or fourteen people, you know... Just to answer to the, all the different voices coming on, instead of moving for, I feel like we'll move things a lot, forward a lot further if we actually don't have, you know, fourteen or sixteen people. And that's actually, if you look across the country, it's very, very unusual to have this many board members. I just did a quick search on cities our size, and there, there were like five, and we're talking about, you know, Portland, Maine, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, where else did I look? Concord, New Hampshire, Santa Fe, New Mexico, Olympia, Washington. It was anywhere from five to nine. So I think there must be a reason why there are usually fewer boards, and I think we heard someone speak to that tonight, that, that on school boards, it's often, it's, can be much more effective to have fewer people. I also think that in some cases, superintendents can use a larger board to basically play people against each other. I think that's harder to do with a smaller board. I could be naive, but I think when you have people who are disinterested, not putting their all into the board, moving in and out, the turnover, I think it's much easier for a superintendent to just not, you know, necessarily... To just move forward without these people, you know, let these people just fight it off amongst themselves, you know, because when they're talking about fourteen, sixteen people that, and you're talking about the hot-button issues we sometimes are dealing with, that's, that's what can end up happening. I think you also look in our region, we don't have any board members supervisory unions, a little bit different, but we don't have fourteen-member boards. Winuski, who is our partner in partnership for change, a very diverse city, has five people on their board. So, I guess I've rambled enough, so I'll turn it off now.
Okay. And I'd like to go around before coming back to you, Erin. Patrick, and then Bernie?
Yeah. I, I think fourteen is too many, and to extend to, to extend to sixteen, to me, I, I just have some real questions on the efficiency of the meetings that we have here. I have some, some real questions, then if we, if we were to extend how that's going to, to have this work as a, as a good deliberative body. I don't think necessarily that more people is going to result in, in greater diversity. Maybe I'm wrong. I, I, as with Meredith, did a, a quick look, and I picked four random cities throughout the country, and their demographic, non-white population, and the percentage of the board members who are non-white are remarkably close to each other. I looked at Baltimore, which was sixty-three percent non-white, five of the nine board members are, appeared, based on names or the photographs here, were non-white. Denver, Portland, Oregon, Boston, all were, were pretty close, and so I, you know, I, I don't know if that counts as, as, as any sort of real evidence, but I, I haven't been convinced on how that's... We have races right now that are, that are uncontested, and I guess I'm just really curious then how we're going to find two more good people if we, for, you know, for a while. We had twelve board members even, that were actually sitting, because we couldn't even find people to fill the seats, and I would rather have eight dedicated people than, than sixteen people filling out, keeping a chair more.
Bernie?
Yeah, I've been back and forth on this a number of times, and, and a couple of things, I, I am set against the twelve member, the, the super district, or whatever you want to call it, concept. And the other thing is, it's, I think it's, I found it just ridiculous of the timeframe we've had to discuss this. I mean, basically, it's been a month, and City Council taken so long to come to their decision. But anyway, that's just, and there's a Torah comment. But I think in the end, I'm coming to support the, the motion of sixteen, and it's primarily because of two things, is workload. You know, since I've been on the board, we finished a discussion on magnet schools, we did the master planning, I think in two thousand and eight. We had a long, involved discussion on diversity and equity. There's always a budget process that is very, very time-consuming. And, and just, a lot of things have come up, ad hoc committees, we've had a couple of ad hoc committees every year, and so I, I think we've got to be careful about the workload, that, I don't care how you structure an eight-member board, you still have to do a certain amount of work, and a body of work. And I think the other thing is just the opportunity. I mean, it's been a privilege being on this board, and I'd like to see that maybe extended to more people. So I'll be supporting it.
Anyone else? I would also, I wanted to say something as well myself, I guess I'll call myself. Miriam, look like you wanted to say something, as I said, I will come back for second comments at some, when appropriate. I mean, I have voiced that I have a preference for eight versus sixteen. The number one preference I do have, though, is honoring the ward basis, and for that reason, I'm in a similar camp to Bernie, and that I would not, I don't support any type of a hybrid. One comment that has stuck with me that was made tonight was, this is a redistricting issue, and it's not changing a governance structure issue, and we have gotten into a discussion about governance, which is fine, we have that opportunity to make that decision. And it's not a decision that's forced on us to, at, only at this one point in time, it's something else that I've been thinking about. And, you know, while I have the preference for eight, I see that in many ways, right now, sixteen is something that I... The difference in numbers does not, to me, have quite as mu- as big and difference in effect as it would changing from the eights, from the, you know, to this twelve structure where we're representing different parts of town. You know, and for that reason, while I have a preference, I would also vote for this particular motion, because I don't think it precludes us from, from always thinking about this basic question, and it could be something we revisit again. And it is something that we will have begun the discussion on, and so as I, you know, I said, that's where I would be. Miriam, I think you are next. Yeah, probably, if you can, yeah, me as well.
Um, so I just wanted to speak specifically to the diversity issue and the larger board. You know, I wish I thought that larger would help in our effort to increase diversity of all kinds on the board. But I think we've had a fourteen-member board for a long time, and what that's telling us is that if we put more members on the board, we'd be more of the same, which is what people do when they don't know what to do, they do more of the same. And I think the result will be, just as it's been for all these years, there will be no change. I would like to talk about other ways that we could increase the diversity of the members of the board. I think Meredith talked about an excellent idea, which is a little bit of salary, because there are many things that get in the way. It's not just childcare, it's transportation, it's having to leave your job sometimes. And I think that is a primary barrier to getting people on the board. That's one. The other thing, someone spoke earlier about an effort to allow new Americans, non-citizens, to vote, and I'm very much in favor of that, and would like to make that one of the next things that I go after, after we straighten out special education in the district. So, I think there's no reason why we shouldn't push that hard. There are many cities in the nation that do that, and that would give us a wonderful way to reach out and, and get more participation. Now I don't know if new Americans can sit on the boards, I haven't looked into that, I'm thinking maybe not, but who knows, maybe we could be the first, alright. And then, the third thing that, let's see, what did I say? The money? No, I, I said money, and then new Americans voting, and there's one more, and it's slipping out of my head at this moment, maybe I'll laugh. Uh, well, anyway, I can't think of the third one, but I do have a third idea about diversity, and how to increase diversity on the board in ways other than just crossing our fingers and saying there's lots of open slots, and we hope that it happens. So, I will be voting against this motion. I feel like, on balance, it won't help us in, in the diversity area, and it, it does have the potential to make things even harder to get done. I would like to answer quickly Alan's comment, that perhaps we're being opportunistic here by talking about governance and, and reconfiguring, when really this was a redistricting issue. And I think it's very hard to separate those two things. If we do nothing, we are doing something. We will have two more members of the board, and I feel like we're a bit at a tipping point, and I think two more people could push us just over the edge. So I think that we don't have a choice. We have no choice but to act. We have no choice to take this opportunity. And I don't know about the rest of you, but when there's a good opportunity, I like to jump on it in my life, and I feel like this is the way to jump on it. It will put us in a position where we need to talk about how to change the board to make it more efficient, how we have less meetings where we're just sitting and listening, and... So I, I really, I feel strongly that, that while it sounds like it's doing nothing, it, it's really not. So, I would hope that some of you will, will join me, and, and think about, think about how we can make this board at least not less efficient. One, one thing before I end, I wanted to say one more thing, and that is, this is a very practical comment in terms of what does efficiency mean? With so many members, in our public meeting laws, there's no way that you can efficiently talk with so many members of your board. So for example, if I want to talk to a couple of different board members about what's going on, I cannot do an email. I have to call each of them. So if I want to talk to perhaps maybe three to four members of the board about a subject, I have to make three to four different calls, which can take an hour of my day, and I just don't have an hour of my day to do that. So what do I do? I don't call anyone, and then I miss that opportunity to work with board members to move us forward, so, thank you.
Erin, Erin, and then I'll come back to you, Greg, if there's nobody else who wanted to make a first comment. Liz? Go ahead, Liz, actually, because for first comment.
Oh, I can wait.
No, I would prefer to go around once before we come back to second comment.
So, is this on? So I guess I have to ramble too. So I don't like going bigger than we are. I think that's too big, and, and I think eight is too small. So I'm probably the only person here that would advocate for twelve members, but I'll go ahead and do it anyway. And having said that, I don't want to be completely inflexible, so I guess if... said that, I don't want to be completely inflexible. So I guess if, you know, my preference is, my last choice is eight. And the ad hoc redistricting committee did kind of a ranking after the first public hearing where we ranked the choices eight, twelve, and sixteen. And then it was a compromise that we ended up with sixteen. And I understand, passing the map around that the city redistricting committee is, Ben has it. And from what I understand from the city's redistricting committee, this was a total political compromise because there was the same kind of difficulty coming to an agreement on the city's committee. Having said that, I find that there at least is a statistical basis for twelve. And people know how much I love statistics and data. But twelve is connected to population representation. So there is a rationale for it. And secondly, the city is going to vote on it in March. And I like the just simplicity of having the school board mirror the city council. I think it's less confusing in voters' minds. I understand the comments about the district map itself, the board map itself being confusing, and I agree. However, I think that once people get closer to the election, they're going to look into it more. They're going to find out more about it. And people tend not to think about ballot items until the week before the election. But when they see it, you know, and they see a city council map that looks like that, and then see a school board proposal that looks completely different, I think that will raise more confusion in people's minds than just going with the simplicity of keeping the representative commissioner number, the score composition the same, which I guess we'll say again, is based on population. So fundamentally, I find that I prefer having a rationale for the number. So in terms of talking about the other issues that have come up, Miriam, as the chair, as the excellent chair of our commendation, a phenomenal job of keeping us all on track and being very efficient, sent around an article about schools in the 21st century that was put out by the National School Board Association. And that is, a very comprehensive document that did find that the majority of school boards around the country are under ten. What is also interesting about that document is that it established that most school boards around the country have very little diversity. And they gave very specific data about that. So it's down in kind of the three and four percent range, no matter where they went across the country. And what was also interesting about that document is that it established that the overwhelming majority of those folks are professionals. And nearly forty-five percent of professionals are businessmen, one-fourth are housemakers or retirees, thirteen percent reported professional background in education. So overwhelmingly, the conclusion was that school board members represent a very white, middle-class educated constituency. And so for me, the issue about diversity is that going to any, well, I'll just say that the community conversation about diversity as a positive force in our community is very recent. And the awareness is very recent. And so when people say, well, we've had fourteen members and we haven't had any diversity, so why are we going to have it now? To me, that's really, the question is, now that we are having such a broad and deep conversation about diversity in our district and community, now that we are engaging people of diverse backgrounds, we are hopefully, I think, building more leadership into the community around diversity. And so having that momentum is very important to me. And I would see, I would hate to see us foreclose the opportunities that could come out of that momentum by going to a much smaller board. So again, that's why, you know, that might make you think the natural conclusion is to go to sixteen, but I think sixteen is unwieldy. And so I find a happy medium at twelve. And I'll just speak to the sixteen-member board. I agree that no matter how much leadership we have from the superintendent or the chair, I think it's extremely hard to get fourteen people, you know, kind of moving along at a pace that is responsive to our constituents. And I think that there's definitely things we could do better in governance to help that. But I think going to sixteen is going to take us away from that. And it's going to be very hard to corral sixteen people. It's already hard to corral fourteen people. So I really kind of have a hard time going with sixteen. That would be my fallback, as it was on the ad hoc committee in terms of ranking, but it's a stretch for me. I like twelve because I think that if we had a committee structure of four committees, you'd have three people on every committee. There's enough people to do the work. There's enough people to, you know, kind of share the representation of the ward and district level. I know people bristle at the ward level, but I think that the four, I mean, at the district level, I think the four district scenario, at least groups, neighborhoods, that have things in common. And at the same time, if you have a ward rep and a district rep, you have two people so that if there are different constituents within one ward and the district encompasses another ward, at least you have two people to kind of represent the differences in those interests and in those opinions. So I think I've said as much as I can say, but I want to advocate for a happy medium of twelve. Going with the city's redistricting model is simple and neat. And I think it achieves other things that people want to achieve on the school board as well.
John?
I actually would not support this motion. And I'm actually diametrically opposed to a board of sixteen. I don't think it's a happy medium to go with twelve. I think it's the only logical way to do it if that's the way the city council and the city is going to be divided. I think that the voter confusion thing is a really legitimate point, that it's already confusing. And I mean, I have a lot of, I have a lot of learning I could do around this process. But I also wonder if with the precincts and wards, would there be some way to have different terms that might promote, you know, maybe the people that are representing the precincts have a longer term and then that, because they're representing a larger body, and then that would create some of the more stability that we have versus like each ward voting for somebody, one of their reps, every other year? Like, I wonder if we're making a decision now about how to district. If we, I feel strongly that we need to go with what the city council went with. But then when it got to the conversation about how to make it happen, the whole idea of terms and the schedule of rotating and whatever, I think that that, if we have the ability to have input on that, I think that that could help tremendously with creating a core, really hardworking body that had more longevity.
Ben?
I'm like the worst guy you want to have in an election going in. I'm undecided up to the end because I have problems with all the options. If I had to choose any of the numbers, it would be twelve. But I do not like the precinct system, so I can't support that. But I think that's, the idea is to have a manageable number. The concern, one of the concerns I have about that, and this is particularly why, is I'm still mulling the very good arguments I'm hearing tonight, is a big concern I have about the precincts as specific to the board, to the school board, is the size. And that means a lot of cost in terms of campaigning. I've been in and out of elective office, in is much better, since 1986. Small districts, when I was in the House, in the old North End, and, you know, now in the New North End. And you want to get out there. And one of the things that we have is like, you know, this is a nonpartisan office. There's no party structure behind a candidate that can help when financing is needed. And if we're looking to expand the diversity of the board and help encourage people who might not otherwise, for whatever reason, have the time or the means to be able to serve, that's not helping, in my opinion. I have some concerns about eight not being enough. And I have the similar concerns that Liz stated about sixteen just being unwieldy. And I think that's, it's not helping us to function better by having more. When this is done, I'm thinking about offering up a related motion about addressing the board committees. But it's not directly germane to this, so I'm going to hold back on that. But I did, I just wanted to speak up with the concerns about the precincts and the impact that their size may have on some of the goals that I think we're all trying to do. And I also wanted to thank the committee on this. That was a terrific amount of work in a very short amount of time and really good outreach and really good input from the community. So thanks to all.
Okay. Erin?
I'll be quick. And before I didn't mean to certainly insult anybody regarding the curriculum committee, because it is a very dense and intense committee. But that being said, I think, and this might be taking from Miriam's point that she might have forgotten, was that we really should be thinking more progressively about how these committees work. So, for instance, why don't we have more people from the community sit on these committees that may not have time to serve as a full board member, but may be able to offer a lot of insight, especially on the diversity and equity committee or even on the curriculum committee? So I think we need to be thinking about how we structure those, our committees in general. What else did I have? Yeah. I just think, I just think it's a much bigger issue than just how many people are sitting on this board. And I think it needs to be more about efficiency and not about making it better. So I think we need to think about how we do things. And again, like Miriam said, this is the perfect opportunity to make that change. Let's do something as a board and do something for the good of the school district. So, I don't know if that's what you were forgetting your third point.
It wasn't that.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Greg?
Thank you. You know, I keep wondering whether I want to say this, but in the words of a wonderful book, all animals are created equal. Some animals are more equal than others. And this is why I cannot support the super ward part of it, which brings us down to twelve, which, eh, twelve, I'm fine with that number, twelve. But I cannot support having these super wards in supersized, super money. It just, it's unfathomable to me that we would go down that route. Now, I've done, you know, Google searches and, you know, does a larger or smaller board promote diversity? Without question, all the research I found, a larger board does support more diversity. And that's just intuitive to me. Eight members. I look around here and I don't think there's anybody here that's slackers or are not committed. I think we can find quality people to come up and volunteer for this job. I don't see that as a problem at all. Now, you get it down to eight people. And yes, Erin, you ran out of post. I ran out of post. Oh, well. You get eight people vying for this. That is going to make it competitive. So who are the eight people that are going to win? They're going to be the eight people that have the most money, that can put up the most signs, that can do the most mailings, and can influence people the most via money. I don't like that. I don't think that is a path that we should be going down. So the question tonight is, what do we support for our redistricting plan? The governance part of it, that's a totally different discussion that I think we should have. But I don't really think it's appropriate for tonight. I think we need to get this issue solved, work out what committees do we think that we need to have? And, you know, what are our goals and how do we get there? So again, my two main points are, eight people means the one with the most money wins. And super wards, which leads us to twelve, I just cannot support that. I'm vehemently opposed to that. It makes no sense to me. And that's it. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? So all in favor of the motion, which would be to recommend to the charter change committee that we have two commissioners elected from each ward for a total of sixteen commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, I guess actually a quick show of hands, those in favor? Four. And oppose? The balance. And I guess I would record the students as well. Okay, both opposed to sixteen. At this point, I would entertain, I mean, I think, I guess I would say we don't have to do anything else. On the other hand, we would like, I think it would be good if we did entertain a separate motion. Linda?
I'd like to make a motion that we go to a board of eight, with incorporating the concerns that I've heard people say tonight, that we would have to, as part of a board of eight, make a real effort that the board look at reconfiguring the committees. So that it would be a smaller board, but we would also address the issues that I think Erin and Meredith and...
Just, Linda, could you make the motion succinctly?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we have eight members on the board and that with the proposal that the board commit to reconfiguring the board committee structure.
Is there a second? Meredith. The motion to recommend to the charter change committee that the board have eight members and that we would commit to a reorganizing of the committee structure. Now, I would like it actually to be clear, you are suggesting one commissioner per ward?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that would be in the motion as well.
If we end up with eight, then we get eight. If we end up with eight wards, yes.
I see. One per ward, okay.
And I would, I would take that as a friendly amendment if you wanted.
Yeah, let's just...
One, one board member per ward.
Okay. And Linda, would you want to speak to the motion?
Well, I've talked to a lot of people and I totally understand the issue of twelve. And I, I think that's really, I look at that and I look at the map and look at the New North End. And I think the only people that will ever be able to afford to run in the New North End will be people like me that are retired and have a pension. Because it's a couple thousand dollars for a job. I look at the, so the twelve is out. I look at sixteen and I just think it's unwieldy. And I look at the commitments that I see this board has to make and the things that we have ahead of us. And I think we've got to be, and I didn't keep the copy that was Meredith's stepfather mentioned, but can I borrow your stuff here for a second? I think, he said it was like a lean, mean, fighting machine kind of thing, where he basically said, we need to be nimble, we need to be flexible. And I think, I've done some real serious thinking this week about the committee structure. And I think it is possible to reconfigure the committees and make the workload even and still make us more effective.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment to this motion? Many of us have spoken so far, I think, probably to this motion already. But if there's anyone who wants to say something specific? Ben? And then, and then Liz?
Since Linda brought it up, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment too. Because since Linda brought it up as a part of her proposal, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment more specifically about the committee process. Because I think it's really important that we set that on a path for that and have a very specific end date to coincide with that. So if I can.
Try it and see.
At the end of where you talked about the districting part and started about that. "And the chair shall commence a process that results in recommendations to the full board for changes to board committee jurisdiction and operations to be implemented no later than board reorganization in 2015."
I'm fine with that.
Just, okay, I just want to point out that if this were to go through charter change committee and we were to have the new board, it would begin getting rolled into place in 2014.
Twenty fourteen.
But you'd still be looking, I'm just pointing that out.
That's fine.
Ben, because you put 2013 on your, on your possible friendly motion.
I said 2015 because I thought that would be the date that any new board would actually take its...
Thank you. I misheard you. I'm sorry.
Okay. That's, that's fine. That, that's fine with me. Yeah.
To the second as well?
It's like a motion machine.
Yeah.
Meredith, is that-
Oh, um, I was-
I would ask the second.
Oh, okay.
You were the second.
I, I, oh, I see what you're saying.
Do you wanna speak to it?
You're the, you're the second to the first, you're the second to the motion, so you actually need to-
I was actually thinking a couple, couple of questions I had that had nothing to do with-
But you need to approve the friendly as well.
Yes. That's what I said, yes.
Okay, thank you. I would just point out with, okay, so that's being friendly, we have not, we don't have a new motion on the table, so anyway, I just, Liz?
Um, I just wanted to ask Linda, you mentioned that with the super ward, you'd have only people who are retired and with money running, but if you bring it down to one person per ward, you're limiting the opportunity even more for people to participate. So, I didn't understand why, if you have one ward plus a super district, that's, that results in people who only have money and are retired running, but if you bring it down to one per ward, that doesn't, that doesn't result in the same thing?
I, I don't think it does, because I think it, it would be a daunting task for me to look at it and say, I'm either gonna run for the ward or I'm gonna run for the super ward. If I know I've got just one small geographic area to run for, it's clearer for people who aren't tuned to the system, I think they would be more likely to enter into the system. I think we'll have a lot more contested elections at an, at an eight-member board, and right now, I, I think people would look at it and say, um, no. It's, particularly when you look at the New North End, it's half the, looks like geographically, half the city is in one super ward, so.
Any other comments to this motion? Are we ready to vote? All in fa, um, actually, would you, is it possible, do you think, to read the full motion?
Um, the proposal is that we have, that we have eight members with one commissioner per ward on the board, and the chair shall commence a process that results in recommendation to the full board for changes in board committee jurisdiction and operations to be implemented no later than board reorganization in 2015.
Good.
All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, I guess a show of hands on that? All favors, all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Keith is on the phone for nine.
Hey, Keith.
All opposed? One, two, three, four, five. So, the vote is nine to five, so what-
One of the students.
Oh, once, I had one student vote against. There's another voted against, and one who didn't have a vote.
Yeah.
And I just wanna make sure we still get the two students, right? Under this new system.
Yeah, that's a separate policy.
We'll have super students.
We're not kicking either of you off.
Then we get eighteen.
We should have them have to run.
Okay. So, at this point, this is what we will present to the, we will present to the charter change committee. What I will say is that this motion does not speak to term length. As-
But that's a, this is a redistricting, term length is not, right?
We, well, if we do nothing with term length language, the language is in there for two-year terms, we would have to recommend to, or the charter change would have to create on their own a process by which we all are set to two-year terms. So, if we make no other statement, we won't, they, it would naturally go to, I think, two years that they would do. Meredith?
I'd like to make a motion that we, I don't know how we do this, and we're saying, where is it written that it's two years' terms?
It's right now in the current city charter that it is two-year terms.
Okay. So, we would make a recommendation to change in the charter?
Yeah, I mean, this is what we're doing, is recommendation to the city charter.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend that be changed to four-year terms.
Meredith has made a motion that we change the length of term for school board commissioner to four-year terms.
Like second.
There's a second from Linda. Everybody take a deep breath. Would you like to speak to that motion, please?
Well, I wasn't expecting to make that motion, but as I sat here and thought about all the arguments about turn, board turnover, now, of course, another motion coming down there.
Just stay with this motion, please.
Yeah. I spoke to some of the issues, and I, I think that board turnover actually really hurts many of the efforts in what we're doing and trying to move forward with many of these initiatives. Not to blame any of you, 'cause look how hard it is to serve on the, the school board. You see, you, the public doesn't always love us, you know? And so, I just, I totally get why people can only do two years. But I think with some encouragement, the fact that you would have four years, I just think it would help with continuity in the school district. And I'm really interested in the conversation more than anything else, so, you know, I'm not married to making this change tonight. I saw the, the in, you know, intake of breath when I made that. Maybe you're not, Erin.
Linda?
I, I think that's not necessarily a bad idea, because then you're going to get, you're gonna have fewer people on the board, but you're then going to have people who are going to take that deep breath and make a commitment. And obviously, not everybody's gonna fill out a four-year term. I mean, that, we know that. But at least they're going into it realizing, because I think in most cases, it takes at least a year or a year and a half to figure out what you're doing. And if you've got a two-year term, you've got about six months when you're really up to speed and doing well, and then you're released from prison, I think, you know? So, I, I think it's not a bad idea.
Miriam?
Um, so, I, I just opened my eyes because four seemed like long, but I, I, you know, I might make a friendly amendment to three. And the reason I would do that is I was, I did go to a few of the charter change committee meetings and talk to them, and the city council at the last minute started talking about this. They didn't talk about it all along, but then they started talking about it. And there were, there was definitely, four was the outlier, and three had a little bit more support. It was my sense, but, um-
Just, let me just stop you for one second, because you've actually asked for a friendly amendment for three. I would like to talk to the-
Oh, actually, I haven't made it yet. I'm sorry. I, I could.
Okay, okay.
She's just talking, she's just thinking out loud.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I could, I could, I sort of want to share that information with the board, that if we're talking about extending the term, I think the city council has also talked about it, they haven't made any decisions, but they definitely were looking more around a smaller increase instead of a larger. The other thing I wanted to put out there is that we can make a decision about term length outside of the discussion tonight about redistricting. We could have, you know, even if it doesn't happen tonight, next board meeting, we could just put on the table that we'd like to extend the current terms of the board members, no matter how many there are, to three years, and ask for a charter change.
There could potentially be a separate charter change, yes.
Now, the problem with that is then it's, it's, any charter change is a vote, right? So, then it would have to be a, an elected election, there'd be a change. So, it's, it's a big deal to do, but I just, in my mind, I also think it's okay now to think about these two issues separately, because one could always do the term length. I am very much in favor of longer term lengths. Would go with four just fine, but would also go with three. I, I feel that the turnover is, the turnover and the learning curve, really the speed that you need a longer term to do.
So, I think the other, you're offering friendly?
I'll, I'll make, I, I'm gonna make the friendly amendment, just because I think, I don't know, would it win over any more voters? So, I'm gonna make the friendly amendment to three. Is that-
Yes. Maybe that's more palatable.
Linda?
No, that, that's fine. I just think extending it, and I, I think people looking, looking at basis, four years seems like a life sentence. So, yeah, I, I'm fine with it. I just think two is not long enough.
Is there any other comment on the motion on the floor right now to switch terms to three-year, basically three years? Patrick?
So, I'm thinking out loud, and I, I don't have any, any data to support this, so, I, I'm wondering if you're going to get a longer commitment from a two-year term than you are from a three-year term. And what I mean by that is people that serve two years are willing to serve a second one, assuming they get reelected. Maybe not a third one, who knows? But if you've served a three-year term, you may say, "I've done my time, and I'm gonna walk off after a single term." And I don't know, I don't have everything behind it, I'm just wondering out loud if we're actually gonna have the, going to a three-year term, which I think I'm in favor of, is actually going to reduce the, the tenure that, of, of board members. Just thinking.
But that might-
Just, just wanna, I would like to get up. If anyone had first comments, otherwise I will come, I will circle that. Greg?
I think you're right, Patrick. If we're talking about turnover, if we're concerned about turnover from somebody that's just doing a two-year commitment, is it gonna be even harder to get a three-year, three-year commitment out of people? And I also wanna say that if two years is good enough for, for the governor, you know, it ought to be good enough for, I, there's nothing wrong with going back to the two years to be accountable to the voters. There's nothing wrong with that.
I think, I mean, it does seem like two years is pretty short, but just the kind of the caution is with three years, it does mean there's only ever new voices on the board every three years. So, the voters of Burlington only get to give that kind of input on how they think the school board is doing once every three years, which is a fairly long time. I mean, I think right now, it's, what, every-
Every year.
Every two years?
Every year.
Someone is up every year.
What?
Someone is up every year.
So, right now, voters are getting an impact, I mean, a kind of a voice about the board once a year, and this would make it three times longer.
I would, I will kind of rephrase what Henry's saying, is right now, within a ward, we have an election, every ward has an election every year. And what Henry's pointing out is each ward will only have an election every three years, even if we do stagger when these come in. Liz?
Um, I agree with Henry and with the two-year term, and, and I just wanted to convey that on the day that the Partnership for Change meeting was happening, I spent the day in the library at an anti-racism workshop, and, and it was this wonderful facilitator, John Muller, who I've recommended that the district use, and we played this game that was really powerful, which really demonstrated the way that the dominant culture sets the rules, and, and how we don't see that, because we're all in the dominant culture, and so we all swing in the same dish bowl, but we all set the rules of engagement. And so, what I think we're doing by going to an eight-member board, the longer the term, is we're really just entrenching the institutionalized, you know, cultural rules that we operate by without even knowing it. And then we really even further solidify, you know, that power and, and really keep others out. So, you know, my personal interest is building an inclusive and caring community, and I think when you get an entrenched group of people in power, you know, there's no one to hold that group accountable. So, I'm just disappointed to see us go in that direction after so much conversation about this, and it just feels like people aren't concerned about that.
Erin?
Um, and as I, I see both points for Liz and Henry, but at the same time, we're here to ensure that the vision of the superintendent is being carried out, and that vision is really, shouldn't be changing every two years. It really should be, you know, something that we can sustain and, and see continuing. So, I mean, I could see a three-year term or a four-year term as a way to ensure that that's actually being done. And I think we do waste a lot of time, you know, getting newborn members up to speed. So, I think it needs to be more about the vision and making sure that Jeannie does her job than about what, hopefully, changing what it is that we're doing now if we reconfigure the committees, and making sure that those are things that are going to be stronger and continuous, not those years.
Ben, just two in first.
To me, the overriding point, and I understand a lot of what you're saying makes sense, the overriding point is, as the elected body addressing the schools, that we have an obligation to stay as close to the people we represent as possible, and the closest you can get is the election cycle, because that's when they get to say yea or nay on policy or personal individual performance. I think it's important that you stay at a two-year term. It's difficult to deal with the learning curve with this and still at it personally. And it's, you know, so you always have the, the difficulty of sometimes losing important historical knowledge when a member perhaps is not reelected when they wish to be. But that's politics, and that's just the way it goes. And it's not for me necessarily to judge what the motivation of the constituent is on whether they feel I should or should not continue to serve, or whether I should or should not be opposed. So, three-year term, four-year term, I, I think is a mistake. It's Burlington, I think two years is fine.
Meredith?
I just wanna speak to the issue of politics, you know? This is not really supposed to be a political lotto. It's really not like running for governor, it's not running for city council. It really is about working with the superintendent to further the vision and the mission in the school district. And I feel like a lot of times, that gets lost because of the turnover. And I was also thinking that the whole issue that others have brought up about how much it costs to run for election, if you're running every three years, you're, you know, then that cuts down on the cost of running. And I don't think it's that people wouldn't be ans, my fear is that what's happening is we are once again facing major board turnover with this diversity and equity plan in place, and every time people come on the board, we're having to explain why we are concerned about diversity and equity. That right now is the major ish, one of the major initiatives in the school district, why are we care about the Partnership for Change? And I, it's not to blame new people, 'cause I was once a new person too, but I think you just get, you know, with the turnover, it's very hard to keep moving forward, and I think a lot of time in the meetings is spent reanswering the questions of board members, not just the turnover, just, you know, lack of interest, or people not being available for meetings, or not reading their minutes. So, I, I just feel like in order to, I'm just really concerned about how slowly things tend to move. So, that's why I threw out this idea of, you know, having four-year terms. I'm not looking for an FDR situation here, where people have to, you know, keep us from running, you know? And by the way, this is not to preserve my seat, because I'm not gonna be one of those people who keeps running.
Patrick, did you wanna say something, 'cause you would be next?
Yeah, I, I guess just the more that I'm thinking about it, I kinda, I kinda like the idea of keeping it at, at two years, my, my thinking has changed. It's a, it's an escape valve for someone who gets in, and besides, it's not for them, for someone who does a good, as opposed to three or four years, where you're dragging your feet and really not being, especially if we're down to eight people, not being a, a really strong contributing member of the board. And then if you like it, you take your test run, you could try it a second time, or a third time, or whatever. Tell people, you decide you don't want to, or constituents decide they don't want you.
Linda?
In this whole discussion, one of the things, working over all the policy, great policy stuff, which is a lot of fun, I discovered that one of the things we need to think about too is that we not only represent the citizens of Burlington as their school board, we also represent the state of Vermont and are responsible for enforcing, that we have a school board and a school district. So, we have sort of a dual role in this whole process, which I didn't really think about too much, but I realize now that that's true. So, that's why I would support longer terms, because I think there are two parts to this job, and I think it takes a while to get to realize that you, you have, you're serving two masters, I'm sorry. So, but I, anyway, other than that, I'm ready to, I don't know if anybody else wants to, if you're ready to have me call the question. I don't wanna cut-
What I would say is, did you just call the question, or did?
No, I, I don't wanna cut off discussion, but on the other hand, if we're just listening to ourselves.
As usual.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Are we ready to vote?
So, can I, what's the motion, are we voting for three or four?
The motion is to recommend to the charter change committee that the school board move to three-year terms. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, I need the hands. One, two, three, four- One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no's. And I got seven, that would give...
Did you see Ben?
Yes, I did see Ben. Once again, yeah, but I am going to take a revote, so all in favor. So Keith, two, three, four, five.
Are you in favor?
This is four, four, I'm sorry. We're getting, I just want to re-vote, I just want to recount. This is for the three-year terms, in favor of three-year terms. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And there were seven against, which means the motion fails. So, it fails, a seven-seven emotion. And the students voted, sorry, how did you get some?
Opposed, opposed, yeah.
They were both opposed. So this motion fails. So, basically, with this motion failing, we would speak, not speak to the term, which would leave the term at two-year for the Charter Change Committee.
Unless someone wants to go before.
I don't think we're going to four.
Sorry, was that a motion, Jill? I couldn't tell.
It's already nine o'clock.
Okay. Miriam, anything else to report from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Restructure? Just so you know, once, we will take this, and this has sunsetted the Ad-Hoc Committee on Redistricting. And I echo what Liz said, which I think you did a great job of keeping us moving and focused. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Let me give one comment. I think we put this committee to bed, but there may, we may need to be reformed after we hear from the Charter Change Committee if they don't accept what we say or they make some tweaks in it. So I just want to put that as an option that we might have to reform.
What I would say is this, they have, they have, we will, this committee has done its work. It will go to the, this board has made its statement, it will go to Charter Change Committee. And if they come back with something further, right now it'd come to the board, we would have to re-establish another committee, so.
And also, I just, there's one, there's sort of details about it. Like I know the city council is working on all their details, like when, whose position falls back.
Yes.
So, there are going to be details that need to be worked out. I don't know when and how, but I would encourage us to...
Yeah, I think that those details will come up, and maybe we can bring them back to the board. Unless, we will keep the board informed, I think would be the thing for you to...
Is that your role?
Right now would be my role, but we can probably work together on this and then keep, bring it back to the board.
All right, thank you.
Meredith?
How does the Mark, the town meeting to vote go? Is this a separate ballot item, or is it all wrapped together?
They are going to put the entire piece onto one vote, from what I understand. So we will be part of the vote, which includes the twelve-four and the twelve-eight for city council version.
There's a very good chance the whole thing... Right, right. But we needed to make a step and move.
So, given that, I, I would like to keep us moving, because we did have a, you know, an extensive debate on this. And, you know, we do have also finance and planning, we're bringing forward together in their reports, the budget draft information with Keith still on the phone, but probably, I hope, taking some Addal or Tylenol at least. I will kind of say that these documents are there. And these documents are really for us to look and see what everything that was put out as a priority by the community and by the administration and by the committees looks like versus the finance committee's, I think, six point nine percent, is that right?
Yes.
Recommendation for the increase in equalized per pupil spending. And, you know, they are not the same. And during this month is when the committees and the administration will be looking to try to bring these in sync. And there will be, you know, further discussion at the board meetings, as well as public comment in December. I don't know if anyone had any questions, comments, anything at this point. I, I did see some emails asking for some additional kind of comparative information that, you know, I think that, I, what I would say is, I know that a lot of ways, if it's a major request, it's a full board request. But I think that the more we can see in comparable information, I think will be better for both the board and the community. So let's keep that in, I guess I would say to, you know, administration, that I think that that's something that, you know, Keith's committee also will make statements, I'm sure to you, about what they want to see. But I know that the more we can be comparable past through the years has always helped with the community.
And it is designed to come later in the process.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments? And Keith, did you have anything else from finance or other than just...
I'll get off now, so thank you, I heard you very well.
Okay, Keith is going to have to say, I don't think, you know, there, actually, there were several reports provided to finance. Please take a look at the reports, the, that were presented. Those were a lot of information resided, I don't know if there was anything else that anyone from finance wanted to mention. Liz?
I just had a question, Jeannie, in the budget context memo. There were a couple of parts of your communication that I just had a question about. On the commitment to diversity and equity, the first sentence says that the board approved your, your plan in this area, but I didn't think the board voted on your plan. I thought it was just an acceptance. Because approved indicates that there was actually a vote to...
What I was referring to actually is in the board's strategic plan on diversity and equity, it accepts the superintendent's plan as implementation of the board plan?
So it's accepted, not approved. So I would just ask that that be clarified.
Okay, okay. And that's in the first, yeah, first sentence. Please, on your committees, remember, this is, this is the work, pre-work that we're setting up for the budget, what has happened prior in the, you know, December, January timeframe. So, please take note of this as you go. I guess next would be Linda for Policy and Advocacy.
And basically, at the last meeting we had, we took a look at, back at what we'd done on advocacy, what we'd set up, Miriam and Patrick and I had set up a year ago and, or six months ago. And we really, to see how we were doing on that. And I think we, we've got a ways to go, but we've got, we've made some real progress. Also, we have set up a meeting, I've heard from Nicole Mace, that she will be coming back, would like to come back to our policy committee meeting, which is what, next week or the week after? And all of you are invited. She's going to come back with some suggestions on the recommended or the required policy board changes. So, this is the time, if you've got any concerns about the ones that are required, that I've sent you all a list of them, take a look at them. The ones that are coming up from, the new model ones from the State Vermont School Board Association are very similar in most cases. And I think there'll be a couple of things where we may have to have somebody from our lawyer, one of our lawyers take a look at it. But in general, they're pretty similar. But they're much easier to read and much cleaner and so on. They're now mainly in an outline form, they've pulled all the procedures out, which will then make a procedure manual, which is something that the staff can deal with. We don't have to approve or not approve changes of procedures, just of policies.
Any questions for Linda? Also, did you want to speak to the resolution, the V S B A resolution?
Oh, oh yeah, thank you, yes. Kathy and I were at the School Board Association meeting, and there was a resolution made. We continue to bring up to the State School Board Association the fact that maybe there should be some additional funding in Burlington for our E L L population and for the extra expense and so on and so forth. And it didn't pass, but we were there and we fought the fight. And there were several people who came up to us afterwards and asked, what is this about? Why, and asked for more specific information. So it's, it's a process. Yeah, I mean, we just keep bringing it up. Also, I did go take advantage of being down there and go to Diane Rakovich's speech. And I have a copy of the book. I have not finished it, but as soon as I do, it was a free copy, I'd be glad to lend it to anybody. She was quite interesting. She has really come around from being a real convert for charter schools to complimenting Vermont on not following that so.
Jill?
I was just going to add that my leaving the Vermont School Board Association, that conversation about E L L students is going to disappear, because I was the only one who brought it up ever.
Right.
And the person who's replacing me is, I think, from South Burlington. So, it would just mean that somehow the public, either your committee or whatever, they would come to it.
Yeah, we're going to have to bring it back up for next year too, yes.
But I would literally bring it up at every single monthly meeting.
Yeah.
And Burlington is so completely different than any other supervisor in any other district in the state, that it was crazy.
Kathy?
They were, they did a study, and we have that, we can probably get it out to everybody about this. And what happens is if our money goes up because we have more E L L students, then everybody else's money goes down, because they don't. And so, they, they need to keep working on it so that it makes, it works for everybody.
And I think Jill's point's a good one too, though, because in fact, in part of the discussion with the community, when talking about board numbers and redistricting, a point from a board member was made to us. We have to be involved, especially in the resolutions, I think it was Resolutions Committee down at Montpelier in the School Board Association there. Patrick, I guess, curriculum?
Yeah, so most of the curriculum, you can find out the, in our minutes. But we do have one motion coming out of the curriculum tonight. And I just got to go ahead and pour the motion, make the motion and then talk to it after. Let me read it. In response to the public, and this is, you guys have this in Word docs, in response to the public comments surrounding the calendar two point O proposal, the Burlington School Board of Commissioners urges the Burlington School District Superintendent to support the two thousand fourteen, fifteen academic year calendar that closely resembles that of the current school year. With the development of future calendars, we expect C V S A to carefully articulate the problem facing the schools, how the calendar change will address the problem, and what data exists to support this alteration while seeking input from stakeholders, parents, teachers, parents, students, teachers, business owners, et cetera, in the development of these alterations, all in advance of proposing substantive changes. The board further believes that it is our responsibility and that of the district staff to incorporate into our considerations the public concern expressed during the calendar two point O response and forum process. We're committed to engaging with the Burlington community in a continued discussion on how to address the education challenges facing our district.
Is there a second? Greg?
So let me talk to it real quickly. What motivated this two-fold? One, that it certainly took up a lot of, a lot of page length or column length. The newspaper took up a lot of time. It was, and it got the community involved. And we felt as, if the two point O for now is not active for the fourteen, fifteen calendar, we felt that it was important for us to bring this to the full boards, that we could at least have a discussion on calendar two point O. This particularly, the first half of the motion really just goes to make sure that we're making a statement saying, in effect, thank you for listening to the community, to, this is to C V S A, thank you for listening to the community, and not moving quickly, too quickly with the proposal. And then before, and for next year, to stick with a calendar that looks more or less like this year's. If there is a substantive change to the calendar moving forward, that we're just asking for a more thoughtful process where the problem is articulated and specifically how this calendar is going to address the problem. So that's the first half of the motion. The second half of the motion gets at trying to use some of the energy that came out of that. We had a lot of people that showed up, spoke very strongly in favor of the schools, recognized that there are challenges within the schools. And we want to figure out a way that we can engage the community and not just have those people go back to their homes and not continue to stay engaged with the schools, but that we can, I don't know, muster that energy in some way. And we don't have a specific plan for, for that, but we felt that it was important to say, thank you for that, and we've heard it. And now, we want you, community members, to come and help us with those solutions.
Any other comment? Liz, I'm sorry, Miriam.
I just wanted to add one thing to what Patrick was saying, that in that second clause, I, I think that from my personal experience going to the local community, the two point O thing, and listening to people and writing about it and talking to people, it's just a sense that really what I heard was sort of like, we want to be doing what Partnership for Change is doing for the high school for the rest of the kids. I, I really got a strong flavor of that. And so, for me, one of the thoughts I had in the second clause was, you know, maybe we shouldn't just wait for Partnership for Change to do its thing and hope it trickles down. You know, maybe we should somehow, although it's hard and we've had a lot of risks, just step out there and try and do something with our K through eight program that starts to, you know, think about the issues and problems that we're running. So that was part of the reason I was in favor of that second, that second clause.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Just one post-comment, I think there was a, in fact, there was like a my turn piece today in the local daily that spoke to this, almost very much to the same point, that there was a lot of energy created by someone from Shelburne.
In the Free Press.
In the Free Press, yeah.
Can I comment?
Yes.
Hard to find, it's only ten pages.
Jeannie.
I'm going to put your AP stories.
I'd like to comment to the idea of capturing the energy. I absolutely agree, we need to capture the energy that came forth. I was not at C V S A this morning due to a doctor's appointment, so I don't know what occurred there. But a couple of weeks ago, I hosted a meeting with a couple of, three Burlington residents and another C V S A superintendent to start having that conversation about how do we capture this energy? And the three women who came and talked with us are very interested in moving forward with capturing some of this energy and working with us. And we have another meeting coming up shortly, so, you know, I anticipate that, that there will be. I am committed to having some further conversation, discussion happening about our schools, whether it's Burlington schools or whether it's Chittenden County schools. I'm happy either way. But we are, I am taking the opportunity to speak to some of the leaders about their ideas about what should happen.
Patrick?
Yeah, I, you know, I guess it falls back now to the Curriculum Committee to start to put together some sort of real process that's going to, you know, to engage. But I would, if anyone has any ideas about an effective way to really use that energy, I'd love to hear it.
Liz?
Well, I got the sense from the public hearing that there actually, that there is a very real need for the school day in the school year to happen differently in order to accomplish certain goals and objectives. And my personal sense from the public hearing was that the people in the room didn't understand that. They didn't understand that there's a need to restructure the time. And so, I just asked the Curriculum Committee, and what I felt like, I felt like I just wanted to ask the teachers, like, do you think your time needs to be structured differently? And if, if you do think that, how would you, how would that look? And what would you need? And so my first sense was like, you know, really wanting to understand from the teachers where, whether they agree with that or not. And if they don't agree with that, then I think, you know, that's kind of the first place to start, is to get that buy-in. I, because I just couldn't really tell where the initiative was coming from. And I think I understood why, but it just wasn't clear to me. And I went in, in the room liking the idea of restructuring the time, but then I just felt like there wasn't, you know, a case made for it. Not that it needs data, I just felt like the people who are actually spending the time in the schools weren't there saying, yes, I need my time restructured differently in order to accomplish the goals and objectives that our district wants to accomplish.
Linda?
I think it's kind of too bad that we didn't, and hopefully we will get from how, some of the comments that went on at the Partnership for Change, because student-driven questions were, can I have my day differently? How would my year look differently? Can I, you know, so I think the conversation shouldn't just be a conversation where teachers need, but what students need... where teachers need, but what students need. And if we're actually thinking of more of, uh, personal plans for kids, then it may, the school year may look very different for people, and that we need to be open to having that discussion. And I don't think when we, when that, um, calendar proposal was brought out, it didn't appear to me that it was brought out from the perspective of how would this benefit everybody's families. It came out, it somehow ended up being, we're gonna cost more for daycare and that kind of thing, rather than, we didn't sell the positives of it. So I'm looking forward to see where, where, where it all goes, but I encourage you to get some input from students. Like, the ones that, um, the group that I attended, they were pretty articulate about that.
Well, so one of the things I think that, you know, was intentionally put into this, uh, into this motion was, um, you know, to, to carefully articulate what the problem is that is facing the school. All right, let's start with the problem.
Maybe there isn't a problem, maybe there's an opportunity. I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, fine, fine.
Yeah.
What, what is the, what is the issue? What is the opportunity? What is the problem? What is the issue that's facing the schools? And before we just say, let's put calendar two point oh, let's say, here is, here's what we're trying to do. How does two point oh, two point oh is not, is not a, is not a problem. Two point oh is, 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 is not, uh, you know, a statement of, of a problem. It's a solution that it was unclear to a lot in the community how this was directly related to the problem, because the problem or opportunity hadn't been clearly articulated in the minds of many.
Anything else? Anything that you wanted to report on from curriculum? Patrick?
No.
Okay. Um, Bernie, I T C?
I'll, um, I'll be brief. First, I haven't had a conversation about some issues around, um, the transportation of students in our district on the, um, public bus system. And just scheduling, um, you know, unannounced changes, late buses, filled buses, a, a, a lot of, lot of issues. And, um, so I thank Marion for, for pushing that, um, that issue forward. And, um, it's a lot of discussion. There is sort of, um, there is ongoing work between the district and the C C T A on, on these issues. And I think we'll just continue to follow this, uh, keep it on the burner, because it, uh, it is important. And, you know, I think the, the solution is there. It's just a matter of better communications and, um, maybe expanding capacity and that sort of thing, so we'll, uh, we'll keep looking at that.
Kind of a question, Bernie?
Yes, sir.
So in regards to, you know, you know, the late buses and all that, is there maybe a backup plan? Maybe it's for Jeanie. Um, is there a backup plan that when, you know, the bus doesn't pick up kids from school or something? You know, it concerns me that a parent might be seeing it and not someone in the building. Is there, do the kids need some sort of, you know, talk about what they're supposed to do when the bus doesn't go?
Well, our, at least our K eight schools provide, at least I should say our K five, I can't say for sure if it's middle school. Um, does provide bus duty. We have bus duties. Um, so I, I can't speak, I mean, that is, I, I don't, we don't have backup buses to come. Um, gen- we have bus duty folks, and if a bus is late, um, if it's, there's so many different variations. If it's one of our buses, then our buses can radio us and, and the school can step in and help. If it's C C T A, that's not the case. Um.
Well, I'm thinking of that specific case that just came up in the last week where a parent emailed some of us. You were a copy don't.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, anyway.
I was gonna say, you have specific issues, I, I think maybe we can, away from board time?
Okay. It just raises, you know, it make, I realize this more than a couple of months. Is there a backup plan for when C C T A doesn't pick up a kid after school? Or, or if that's?
Well, C C T A wouldn't pick up a kid.
I mean, okay, we probably should just move on.
When the bus doesn't show up.
Yeah, if it's a C C T A bus.
Yeah.
Could I just add one quick thing, because I, I did bring that to the committee, and I just wanted to add to what you said, that one of the concerns that was brought up was safety. An issue that you have kids riding on the bus standing up, and if that's okay, and a C C T A bus, it's not okay in school buses. And so I brought the issue of, sort of, the risk of what's, what could happen and what liability does the district have if that could go on, and talked a little bit about, and I think Jeanie seemed open to it, to talking about, looking at a, instead of just doing what we've always done every year, and saying it happens every year, to kind of think about our bus plan and make sure that we're aware of what our risks are and that we are serving kids. So it was sort of my sense that at the end of that year, committee kind of agreed to keep that as part of the issue, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Paul and, and Mark, uh, presented a update on the five-year capital plan. And, um, and I would, that, that's on the agenda for I T C, and I would, uh, highly recommend that people take a look at that. It's, uh, it's getting somewhat staggering. Uh, and also to take a look at how the priorities that we've initially set up to sort of prioritize, uh, these projects, uh, time-wise. And, uh, and to take a look at that, and if you have any, any opinions on those priorities, certainly get ahold of, uh, Liz and Keith or myself for any input. We would appreciate that.
I have a question or just a little comment there. I think if I took a quick look, like, the Champlain skylights and windows, I think there were some items on that capital list already related to those.
Yes.
That issue that was brought up. I don't know if there was related to the Smith issues that were brought up. They look like are smaller, which are probably more like maintenance issues, but.
But that was new.
Yeah, that one, that one was new, okay. So I just, I had seen the Champlain items on there already.
Saint Joseph's, uh, school presented sort of two spreadsheets on that. One with the costs of, um, similar to what we presented last month. And then also what we could get for the break-even point, the one point three or six million dollars. And so those are both listed out, what, uh, what each of those things will, will involve. We spoke a bit about budget priorities, just that ongoing process to provide information to, uh, for the budget process. And some of that included money for the B H S, um, design and planning fees, um, one-to-one, the cost for our capital bond that we have each year, the, the, uh, service on that. We have lowered the amount of money, extra money that, um, administration's asking for facilities and for staff. No, staff stays the same, facilities went down. But that'll come up during, during the budget, uh, budget discussions. Property services, uh, the fire marshal came through all the buildings in October, and, uh, basically got some, a good report on all our buildings as far as safety and, um, fire safety issues and life safety issues, so that, that's, uh, that's good. There was some emergency repairs at the high school. There's some drains underneath the floors that had broken, and it sort of eroded the fill out underneath the floors. And so we had to go in and, and fix that. And, and now we're gonna step back, and, uh, we're gonna buy a camera and take a look at, at all the drains underneath the building, because it's, um, something we need to know for any ongoing projects, but also just, uh, if there's any repairs needed. Flynn update, it's finished, it's turned over to the district. They've already started moving in some of the classrooms, and the kids are supposed to be back in the classroom before the Thanksgiving break. So that's, that's good, so, and that, that's, that's gone very well. Amy Mellencamp came in and gave, uh, an update on the, um, uh, the work here at the high school, the proposed work. And that's also on the, uh, uh, agenda. Those comments from Amy, there's a new schedule, uh, as far as moving forward. And also Amy's done just, and, and her group has done a, a great job just laying out what has to be done. And, uh, at the end of summer, I was a little concerned that things were getting installed, and they weren't progressing quite as quick. I bet she, she's really got the head of steam now, and I, I think that, uh, the whole process is going well. So take a look at the, that attachment from Amy, and, uh, and that's it. Next month, we're gonna talk about the sort of bonding and the Edmonds project. Um, we're gonna roll that into, uh, potentially into a, a bond, too.
Any follow-up with, for Bernie? Uh, Rebecca?
I'm gonna be quick. Um, we, there was some concern that we were gonna have to move our meeting dates. And the agenda that we did have wasn't quite as complete as it could have been. But, uh, we had a good conversation about budget items. The Gantt chart is going to be a monthly presentation by Jeanie based on what were her goals from her plan and where is she at month by month, so that, uh, there's clearer accountability from the office and from, from the diversity and equity office and from Jeanie about where are we at in terms of goals, uh, from a monthly basis, moving plans forward. Now that Deverne is here, the diversity and inclusion report and the committee advising that report, hopefully will get up and running effective next month, I hope, I think is the plan. With, um, regrouping of who that advisory committee is with Liz, yes, are you, uh, with Liz being our board representative on that committee, which will be two effects, so thank you, Liz. The cl- adult climate survey, survey for the high school is on the, it's not in the minutes, but it's on the agenda from that meeting, so folks should look at that with the request from the committee to break down the data a little bit further, to disaggregate it a little bit more. And then a discussion about the climate survey, uh, a ongoing discussion about the climate survey with really the need for, um, the advisory committee to move forward with it. That so long as it gets rolled out and, um, questions asked by January, it will be available to report out with a report in late February, March. With, um, the report that comes out in March will be last year's data, except the climate survey will be this year. So it doesn't line up perfectly, but the alternative is we wait another year for the climate survey, and that, that would be wrong. Did you wanna say something?
No, I just wanted some clarity around exactly what you just said.
There you have it.
Having trouble finding that, well, that's very confusing in a nutshell, so it's like working on that later.
You don't, what, are you talking about the student one or the adult one?
The adult.
The adult's done.
The adult one was done, and I don't have it in front of me. Jeanie, would you like to speak to it?
It was like, two seconds, like, did it say everyone's happy, everyone's mad?
Yes, I can.
If only.
And actually, um, can you give me just one second?
I've got it up right here, Jeanie, if you want.
The whole survey or my summary letter?
No, I just, you're, just your summary letter, actually, is all I have.
That's exactly what I want.
There it is.
The summary letters need it.
October, diversity and equity report, uh, uh, diversity and equity meeting.
So it says, it says that a six hundred and twenty-nine employees participated, which I have to say is really phenomenal, because we really gave them ten days in June. And Patrick, Garan, all of the teachers out there, imagine being asked in June to fill out a lengthy survey.
Well, if they could even find it in June, that's a major miracle in itself.
Uh, then six hundred and twenty-nine employees, it's not just teachers, it was all adults in the district. Sixty-five percent response rate, first all-employee survey. That really impressed us. The vast majority felt respected in the workplace. Eighty-six percent say adults have professional respect for each other. Ninety-five percent stated they feel safe at work. I will also say, as I'm reading this, that this is not exactly what we expected. We actually expected lower percentages. It doesn't mean it's okay, that it's, you know, but it isn't. Five percent commented that on incidents of unwanted sexual comments, and twelve percent commented that feeling stereotype, um, comments were made or incidents were made. So we are continuing to work on eliminating all instances of a hostile workplace environment. Other areas for improvement that we picked up is reporting of inappropriate behavior, working harder to reach satisfactory outcomes with supervisors, improving peer-to-peer relationships, which is the most common source of, of workplace conflict that we have, according to the survey. Forty-five percent reported feeling uncomfortable speaking out about inappropriate behavior. Fifty-two percent commented that they were satisfied with supervisor's response to an incident that's reported. So again, these are areas of opportunities for improvement. We are, um, in the process of sharing the site-level reports with, um, each school, so that schools can have discussions about what their school climate is. And that's just going out this week, um, to the schools. And it's our intention to readminister the survey next year, perhaps in May instead of June, but still.
I just wanted to add, as someone who was at that meeting, I was sort of struck by ninety-five percent feeling safe at work, eighty-six percent, um, what was that one?
Professional respect.
Felt respect, respect, and forty-five percent felt uncomfortable confronting something. So it just left for me the question of who were the thirty-five percent who didn't fill it out? And maybe the ones that did fill it out are seeing stuff that feel respected themselves, you know? Assuming there's a disconnect.
Anything else?
Patrick, was your hand up?
No.
Okay, I guess the only thing I would say is that Rebecca and I did meet talking about trying to schedule, um, board development around equity and inclusion. We were trying to figure out if we could do a date in December. I think we wanna get together with, um, Deverne and her team, now that she's here. I don't know that we, Deverne's also got some work with the other, with the, uh, data. I think that Nikki has some ideas as well, so we'll try to do something. And also, on the twenty-fifth meeting, I spoke to Hal a bit about what, whether or not we might be able to do something jointly with the Winuski Board or perhaps separately prior. And Hal's definitely open to it, because, you know, the, the themes of equity and inclusion are very closely connected with what Partnership for Change trying to work on with student-centered learning. So he saw the connection, that we could probably do some professional development that day as well.
Can I comment before you adjourn?
Yep. Yeah, I have, I have one, I have two final things I gotta say before we adjourn, too. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, one of the things that I, I don't think we said clearly in the budget discussion, and I wanted to make sure that the full board understood, is in, in the next phase of this, on December second, I am to be bringing back a draft two to finance and December third to planning. So the committee meetings that are occurring during November should be revisiting. You have the data in front of you with da- draft one, what it costs, all the things that are, that are being requested. I'm, did work with administrators yesterday, and I'm, I'm changing the administrator's list and bringing forward some new ideas. I T C already revisited theirs and, and, and are modifying it. So curriculum and diversity are also asked to revisit and, um, you know, make some recommendations so that the draft two budget is, is an up, is an evolution of the draft one budget, and done in concert with everybody.
Will there be somebody from finance at those committee meetings?
I don't know. It's not part of the plan.
I have two things. The first one is something I forgot to do during the board report, which was,
Oh, yeah.
I received from the Vermont School Board Association a five-year service award to be awarded to Bernie O'Rourke in recognition of dedication and exemplary service to Vermont children. children. As a board member for the Burlington School Board, signed Stephen Dale, the VSBA Executive Director. So Bernie. And the second thing I'd like to say was, in the motion of...
Keith got one for 20.
What?
Keith got one for 20 as well.
Right, yeah.
He got it, added it.
Yeah, I think that, yeah. The, the one thing I said in the motion that came forward for redistricting, the chair was charged with putting together a group to revamp basically our, our governance structure, make some proposals that would come in line with, I think, the reorganization in 2015. I don't need an answer to this now, but a question that came to mind is, do we think this work should start before or after the election? Was my, was the one thought. And I guess I would just, you know, ask board members if, you know, they weigh in on that, because if it's something that we think we should start off right away, we can get that going of a mind that we may want to wait until the election. We would still have at least one full year to work on that. Jill?
It might help, I don't, I mean, I don't know what people's knowledge level around self-governance is, but it might help to get something out for people.
Yeah, that's actually a good idea. Probably get some information out about some different ideas that could work with any board member and write several proposals. That's a really good idea. To get some more information out to the board, to have some thoughts, good. You wanted to ask that question for a reason. Okay, is, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Aaron, seconded by Rebecca. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting is adjourned.